Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, March the 14th. For those of you who are joining us for the first time, or at least that don't come down here every other Thursday. How we do this is, first thing, now would be a great time to turn off your cellphone. Okay. And how this works is, we have a little bit of sort of housekeeping here at the beginning that we'll go through. When we get to the cases that are going to be individually heard, we'll ask each of the applicants to come up, give us their name and address for the record, tell us what it is that they're here to ask us for. We'll perhaps ask them some questions. If there are people here who wish to speak either for or against the item, we'll ask them, each in turn, to come forward and do the same thing, give us their name and address for the record, tell us whatever it is they have to say. We may or may not have some questions for them. We may or may not discuss the matter further amongst ourselves, and then we'll vote on each one in turn. And we'll start off with receipt of the minutes from the February 28th meeting.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to receive the minutes from the February 28th meeting. On, over. Cast your votes, please. We're all here except Commissioner Hansley. Okay. They are received, which is what we do with minutes. Continuance requests, these are items that appear on the agenda but for one reason or another, we're not going to hear today.
Okay. So we received three uncontested requests for continuance on your agenda. Item B-25 for case V-18 is deferred to March 28th. Item B-26 on the agenda for case PUD-1702 is deferred to April 11th. And item B-27 on the agenda for case SPUD-1085 is also deferred to April 11th.
Now, is there anybody here today who thought they wanted to be heard on one of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to continue the items as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 25, 26, and 27. Cast your votes, please. They are continued.
We also received three new requests for continuance for item B-3 on the agenda for ED-226 to continue to March 28th. Item B-23 on the agenda for CE-979, also to March 28th. And item B-24 for case SPUD-1102 to defer to April 25th.
Is there anybody here present that thought that they wanted to be heard on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to continue items as read.
Second. I have a motion and a second to continue items 3, 23, and 24. Is that right? Do you cast your votes, please? Those items are continuing. We have a consent agenda. These are items that are fairly routine in nature, for which there has not been any protest filed, and therefore we vote on them as a block rather than separately. Would you read those for us, please?
Sure. Now that we've continued item number 3 on the agenda, there are four items on the consent docket. Item 1 is case CE-987. It's to close an easement located at 14901 Law &amp; Lane. Item 2 is ED-225. It's an easement dedication at Southwest 113th Circle. Item 4 is KC-7056, the final plat of Southwest 134th Street Industrial Park. And item 5 is KC-7057, the final plat of the pinnacle at Brookstone Phase 2.
Is there anybody present who thought they wanted to be heard on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to continue items 1, 2, 4, and 5. Do you cast your votes, please? Those items are approved. Did I say continue? I'm sorry. Okay. And moving to... So then we have items requiring separate vote. I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, is there anybody else who wants to continue something today? I guess not.
Okay. Under items requiring separate vote, item number 6 is case PUD-SP-1628A. This is for a specific plan pursuant to PUD-1628.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Colquhull Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, as Ms. McDermott said, this is a specific plan application for the development of an ONQ at the corner of Mustang and 15th. You may recall a fairly lengthy PUD process on this track. It's a rather large track, so over 200 acres, that is bisected by the new turnpike. Where this falls is in Track 6, that northeast corner of Southwest 15th and Mustang. If you looked through the PUD, what you would see is, in the master development plan map, this corner, at the time of the PUD, actually called out for a convenience store and gas station to be there. So it is what was contemplated to be there. The only unique thing about this, I believe, is the height of the sign that we're requesting. In the packet before you, which is including the narrative as to why we believe we meet the PUD, the dumpster enclosure elevations, landscape plans, and finally, the sign renderings, which is in Tab 4, at the time of the PUD, what we did was, we provided for a minimum height of 20 feet. But further in the PUD document, we allowed for the discretion of the planning commission at the time of specific plan to address specific sign height. The reason being, when you have a track this size, over 200 acres, it was hard to contemplate what might actually be developed, when and where, and what type of signage might be needed. It would certainly be different if it was one large commercial development that might just have entryway signs, or if it was developed as a series of out parcels, the sign needs at the time just weren't contemplated. Now, we're here on this piece of it, and what we're asking for in the specific plan application before you is 30 feet. One of the primary reasons being, we have a direct competition, which would be the southwest corner of Mustang and 15th. There's a 7-Eleven there. Their height is over 20 feet. It's approximately 25 and change, almost 26 feet high. In talking to some commissioners, there was a concern about the 30 feet requested. We would request at a minimum, we were at least allowed the 25 and change that 7-Eleven has. One of the, I think the comments that planning commission has always had when it comes to signs are, you know, what kind of sign competition is there? You know, if somebody wants a 20-foot sign, but there's no signs around, there's really not perhaps grounds for a taller sign here. We do have directly across the street from us a 25-plus-foot sign, so we would simply ask that we would be put in the same position as that person. In terms of where the sign would go, that was also a question raised. You can see on this exhibit right here, we only have one freestanding sign. It's right here at the corner, so it's just north of 15th along that Mustang Road corridor. All the other signs are internal. We do have the driveway sign, but the one freestanding sign that would be along the right-of-way would be located right there at the corner. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Commissioners, here's a cautionary tale about sign competition. If you allow one of them that's taller than is normally permitted, it just fosters a lot of other people to come and request larger signs than we would normally approve because they think they need it for sign competition. If we're going to give them 25 feet, I suggest we cut it off at 25 feet and drop the change. Otherwise, I'll say, the application seems to me to be very much in keeping with what we thought we were approving. To some extent, we discussed the question of how many more curb cuts there would be north of this, along Mustang Road. So I had some question in my mind when we spoke about how much of Track 6 this took up. It's just taking up the Mustang Road frontage. There's still additional property in Track 6 to the east of this, so there will be an additional, or there will be additional curb cuts on 15th.
Right.
But as far as the curb cuts within Track 6 on Mustang Road, what did you come up with?
So the way that the PUD lays it out is, it actually lays it out in terms of total number of curb cuts along 15th and along Mustang. I believe the number is 6 or 7, depending on certain triggers. Here, what you can see in the site plan is, there's actually, the north one that we have here then has a kind of a cut right there to provide cross-access, and the same thing would be contemplated, you know, here. And so we're still, there's still plenty of curb cuts available. It's in keeping with the curb cuts outlined in the PUD, perhaps even less. I believe your comment was, when you look at the original master development plan map, originally, it seemed like there was a series of fast food or out parcel restaurants that each had a curb cut.
Right.
This would be a longer stretch along Mustang, and perhaps reduce some of those curb cuts. But there is still additional land within that Track 6 to be developed. It's a fairly sizable tract.
That was a really good non-answer. Do you have any idea? I mean, isn't there, is it, as I'm looking at the site plan, I guess, for the original PUD?
Mm-hmm.
There's a green belt entryway kind of thing. I don't, I don't know if that's because of existing topography and/or, you know, whether you're following something there.
There's a creek that comes through there.
So what I'm really interested to know is, how many more curb cuts will there be north of this property between you and the creek?
I mean, it's unknown because we don't know what would be developed there.
How much land is there? I mean, how many feet of frontage?
I don't know the material footage. I mean, you could certainly have another development or more, but the problem is, it could be, you know, it could be a restaurant, or it could be, you know, a larger retail center. There's just no way to know today.
How many curb cuts were laid out in the PUD?
Six.
Total.
No, for the, for this piece of property.
For Track 6.
Along Mustang Road.
For Track 6.
Right.
So they can have six.
Well, I'm asking how many they think they'll actually need.
So it's six total along, not just Track 6, but it's six total along Mustang. So in Section 9.6 of the original PUD, which is on Page 12, it says, "Driveways within and adjacent to this track parcel shall have a minimum 200 foot of separation from driveway to center line, driveway center line to driveway center line, and shall meet all city design standards. Additionally, there should be a maximum of seven access points along Southeast 15th, six access points along Mustang Road, and six access points along Sarah Road." It does say that, you know, the final number of access points shall be determined at a specific plan stage, but it sets a number of six along Mustang, seven along 15th, and six along Sarah.
Okay. So, okay, so the town center concept that we have attached to the PUD shows six just in this tract along Mustang?
Right.
Okay. All right.
But the specific number outlined in the access regulations is six total along Mustang.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Is there anybody present here who wanted to be heard on this item today? We're, of course, looking for stellar landscaping on this corner.
It will be stellar.
I'll take a motion.
I make a motion that we recommend approval to the City Council, PUD-1628A.
Second.
Are we approving or with what height of signage? I'm so sorry. I just want to make sure that's clear. What's the signage approval?
We'd ask for the 25.9, which is what the 7-Eleven has. And just for purposes of the motion, it won't go to City Council.
Oh, correct.
It's not a recommendation.
City plan.
The sign deal, I mean, does ONQ really need that big of a sign?
So Mustang Road is a state highway.
ONQ is the sign. It's going to be a turnpike. Is the sign going to be outside?
And they'd like to have some visibility from, you know, the turnpike. And so, yes, I mean, Mustang Road's a state highway, the turnpike's coming in there. I don't think 25.9 for a heavy commercialized area is excessive, considering there is an identical 25.9 sign just south and west of us.
To be fair, we talked about this rather extensively at the time of PUD, and what was determined was that it could be taller along the turnpike and lower as you moved out from there. So what was...
And that makes sense.
What was recommended for this track would be 20 feet.
But with the discretion at the specific plan stage.
Yes, always, always.
Not always, but we'll get to that.
So, I mean, that's what was, that was what was written into the PUD.
Commissioner Gobbi, it was your motion.
Yes, I made my motion just to recommend approval of the sign as presented.
The 20 feet?
20 foot.
So what I'm asking, as presented, is not 20 feet. What we'd like, I do think that it is, there's an element of fairness. If you have a competitor directly across the street, that we'd be afforded the same opportunities as them. This is why we, one of the things that planning commission's always wanted is, if you own a large parcel, show it, show it to all, you know, the entire parcel. Well, that presents challenges, and this is perhaps one of them. We could come up with a baseline of 20, but we wouldn't know on a parcel-by-parcel basis what we needed until we were here before the planning commission. And so now that we're here, and we know the exact use, when you look at the 25.9, that allows them to have their standard sign package. Once you cut it down to 20, you take out some of their messaging.
But how is that, how is that argument any different than any fast food restaurant or any other user that might choose to locate along Mustang Road? They all have their sign package. They all have their preferred height.
Because not everybody is like a convenience store that has multiple different things that are being offered within one box.
Can you more clearly state your request?
Yeah, 25 feet, 9 inches.
Where'd the 9 inches come from?
20, excuse me, 24 feet, 11.5 inches.
I think if we are inclined, I'll go back to where I started. If we are inclined to give them a bigger sign than the 20 feet that we agreed to in the PUD, we should just say 25 and call it even.
Yeah, next to 9 inches, or the 24, 11, or whatever we're going to...
Yeah, let's just go 25 and call it done.
11 and 1/2.
How about not to exceed 25 feet?
I like that.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second. I'll second the motion to approve the specific plan for PUD-1628.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the specific plan for PUD-SP-1628A with a 25-foot sign. Do you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
Item 7 is PUD-SP-1643A. It's for a specific plan of PUD-1643.
Again, David Box, 522 Colquhull Drive, on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Gumberson is handing out some packages that will show you this development. This is a, again, a specific plan for a PUD, PUD-1643, that is along South Sooner Road, just north of I-240. This is a PUD that we spent a lot of time with here at Planning Commission because of, at the time, an industrial reserve, I believe what it was, overlay on this site. That was ultimately lifted, and the site was rezoned to allow multifamily. At the time, what we had discussed is this not being a traditional multifamily project. In other words, not a series of really large buildings, but rather playing to the proximity of Tinker and the aerospace engineering that exists around here and what is likely the tenant base that they're going to have. These are more like homes in terms of, they're smaller, you know, they're two stories, they have pitched roofs, they don't look like that traditional imposing multifamily project. So what we have is a specific plan application that is fully compliant with the PUD as approved. I do want the architect to come up and kind of walk you through some of the images, and walk you through their, their concept and their design as how we got here. I do want to point out and remind the commission that part of the approval of this PUD did have a traffic signal to be paid for by the developer that will be located along Sooner Road, so that is still the case. The developer will still be required to install that at their cost, and we will work through the necessary procedures through the city to get that installed. So if there are no questions of me at this time, I'll have the architect come up and walk through some of these images.
Hi, I'm Zach Woods, Garden Architects, 323 Northwest Night. We have a similar product that was originally submitted, a series of roughly 45 residential buildings that are individual buildings that have garages for each unit within the building. We have three, three amenities buildings, and then two smaller kind of amenity pavilions that are just grade structures, not actual buildings on the site. You can see there's a very clear X on the site. We have some pipelines, Philip 66 pipelines, high-pressure pipelines that we have to contend with, that have some setbacks and easements that are non-negotiable for safety, and quite frankly, it's Philip 66. And then we also have another pipeline on the west side of the property that parallels the railroad track that's over there, that we also have easements and right-of-ways to contend with. In addition to that, there's also a flood plain along the east side, along the creek there, that has a fairly large flood zone on the east side. And then our site roughly slopes approximately 40 feet from, from west to east, so there's quite a bit of fall across the site, as we're also limited to the pipeline easements, and then they also require a certain number of feet above their pipeline. So in this case, we're actually adding grading to the site in order to meet code on the pipelines. We're having to add dirt on top of those pipelines to get the minimum coverage. So we have quite a few site constraints on this site that we have to contend with before we can even begin to kind of design the structures and the stuff that people live in. Architecturally and site-wise, it's intended to be a very pedestrian-friendly, and the priority is given to the pedestrian. We have tight streets to allow people to drive a bit slower, sidewalks throughout, we have walking trails, we have bike trails, and many amenities that are within walking distance of every, of every building on the site, and two linear parks, so we're using those pipelines as a reason to kind of give two large green swaths of kind of park area that are anchored by sidewalks on either side, so people can walk several miles within their development from their apartment. Very kind of intended to be pedestrian-oriented and less vehicular-oriented, although it is basically going to have a car here to get to work. Let's see, you know, we've, our buildings range from eight units to 16 units, and that's really kind of the sweet spot in this type of a development for efficiency and taking our dollars. You get anything less than eight units, it starts to get a little too expensive per unit, and then you get a little more than 16, it starts to make those buildings a bit too big for this type of development. So we fill that eight to 16-unit buildings, kind of the sweet spot. Our unit count has not changed much since the previous submission. I believe we're actually right at or under what was amended for the unit count. We're at 514, I believe, total. And then we have the supporting amenities and pool areas on the entire site. And then we have, and then we do have a parking garage for every apartment, so there's a parking garage off of the buildings that cover at least one garage per apartment, and then there's additional on-street and smaller parking surfaces for parking for additional guests and additional tenants. I'll be happy to take any questions that you have for me on the architectural side.
It's a great-looking project. I think it's exciting. I did have a question. You mentioned that the streets are tighter than normal. What are, what are the lane widths?
Well, I believe we have a couple of different street widths. Our primary, I believe, we have 11-foot drive lanes with amenity zone and sidewalks, and we have alleys that are 20-foot streets, so we're 10-foot lanes. All of, we've kind of run through that with planning previously, and, and so we're kind, that's kind of where we are, 22 to 20, somewhere around there.
Cool.
Just probably another architectural question, but how far is it off the center? I'm just curious. Might say on one of these maps, but they're so tiny, I can't read them.
There you go. Over 1,000.
1,000.
Yeah. And that's the primary entrance, or the only entrance is off of center? The south entrance?
Right, and the other one's emergency.
Right. And the intersection is still, will still be a controlled intersection at the entrance.
And that's directly across from the Sonic, right?
Yes.
Liberty Trails that goes in, another road that goes across there. That makes sense.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item today? For myself, I will not be voting in support of this. Frankly, I have not felt quite so baited and switched in a long, long time. You go back and look at the conceptual drawings that were attached to a much, much debated and negotiated PUD, and they look very residential. The layout for the property is, is, you know, very green space-driven, a lot of variation in the sizes of the buildings, from large units down to things that look almost like single units. Maybe they're duplexes. This is not even close to what I thought we were getting here. I'm glad it's only 514 units. I noticed that there's been an administrative amendment to boost it from 500 to 600, and I, I don't feel like this is anything even close to what we agreed to and negotiated. I can't imagine how you could cram another single unit onto this property without going up, and I am completely opposed to it.
So, a couple things. What the planning commission is reviewing today is whether or not the specific plan application complies with the PUD. Nothing more.
Yeah, you know I don't agree with that. I don't think you can delay design decisions until specific plan stage and then say... But you don't have the right to make design decisions.
So, I mean, I think this is still in keeping with, with the intent of what we did. What we had planned for was the non-traditional multifamily, and, I mean, if you look at Page 9 of the PUD, it says conceptual elevation.
I understand that.
And that's no different than, than any PUD, so to call it a bait and switch is just incorrect.
So we shouldn't, we shouldn't take as actually being presented what, what you show us, is what you're telling me, and I don't think that that's fair.
It's an idea.
It's an idea, but we don't have to abide by it. So I think, you know, that is really, really a disservice, both to the applicants and to the commission.
Well, I mean, architects change, ideas change. Here, we had very specific changes that had to happen because of the setbacks that were required from the pipeline that we weren't aware of at the time of the...
And if so, you might at least come forward and say that. We're going a whole different direction. This is not at all what we were thinking we were going to do, instead of just like, oh, this is completely compliant, you have no choice, you have to approve this.
So planning commission is not a designer's view district. We have those in Oklahoma City. Planning commission is here to weigh in on plats and be the final arbitrator of plats, and when it comes to zoning, it's more about compatibility of uses and density of uses.
This is a specific plan approval.
And the, the specific plan approval is limited to a discussion of whether or not the specific plan complies with the zoning.
Then why isn't it simply an administrative approval? Why are you here?
Well, because the code requires us to come to planning commission, but in fairness, it's always been a consent item, until recently. It's always...
That is so not true. We've only been doing specific plans for a relatively short period of time. The fact that they have sometimes been consent items does not mean that that's where they belong.
Fair enough. It is a new concept. I will give you that. However, I believe the law, to be clear, that what you are doing as a commission member in a specific plan application is similar to a plat.
Then the result of... Then the result of that is going to be that applicants are going to have to make a lot of decisions that they tell us they're not prepared to make at the zoning stage in order for us to have enforceable obligations, and I don't see how that's going to work. I think that the system we have now has been an accommodation, and if you're telling me that we've delayed these decisions until now, but now you don't have the right to make those decisions, I can't live with that.
There are certain decisions that you absolutely have the right to defer, right? I mean, several PUDs, I mean, when it comes to signage, there are signage regulations in PUDs that specifically defer the decision to the specific plan stage. In the absence of a decision being deferred, what you're really talking about is you prefer the way that the pictures in the PUD look compared to the pictures you've been shown today.
I think that's absolutely nonsensical. If you are not required to meet our expectations at specific plan stage, there's no point in you being here. You're saying it's in the PUD, this is what was agreed, it's already been decided, you don't have anything to decide here today, and that makes no sense.
Perhaps it doesn't, but I firmly believe that that is what the law says. I mean, I can cite specifically to a case...
Well, if that is true, then I think we're going to have to completely re-n debate the way we're doing business. What is your opinion?
The specific plan provision is limited to certain items that are in the code. It allows you to be more specific or refine the concepts in the PUD, but the basic concepts in the PUD and the use and development regulations are the same. They can't be varied.
And so I... For purposes of the discussion, I'm going to read from a Oklahoma Court of Civil Appeals opinion entitled Covale Creek LLC versus City of Edmond versus Ashford Oaks Homeowners Association, in which we were before the seat of Edmond on what is their specific plan application, there it's called a site plan, on a Walmart grocery store.
If you're going to start quoting the law, then I'm going to ask that this case be continued, so that we can take up this matter with the municipal councilor's office in detail. We have enough lawyers sitting up here that I'm sure we'll all want to look at it ourselves.
I mean, I'm just... For purposes of the record, I want to say it, but, I mean, you're... What you've been providing, your staff report, there is nothing about this plan in this application that doesn't comply with the PUD.
They're all required to comply with the PUD, but that's not the only requirement.
If you could point to the code, what other requirements do you believe exist?
I think that the site design and layout is one of those requirements. I think that is up to us to decide at this stage.
The code does not afford you that discretion.
Well...
And site design, I mean, it is generally the same design.
It's not even close to the same design.
The shape of the buildings are different.
No, the layout is completely different.
As luck would have it, I brought the original design, and perhaps some of the streets have different shapes, but the same concept with the two big swaths going through are the same.
I just had my exhibit in my hand. Let me find it again. It's not even close.
I understand what you'd like the process to be. I just don't believe that is what the... What you would like is this to be a design review at... Yeah. At the specific plan stage, and perhaps the city council could modify or enact a new ordinance that would afford design discretion at a specific plan stage, but that's not where we're at right now.
And I don't know that it should, and I don't know that that... I think this... We understand the point. We could have a disagreement about what the ordinance says and what it allows, but we can move on, too. I'm curious to know if there's anybody else that wants to be heard on this, or if we can move this forward. Is your position that the specific plan meets all the requirements of the underlying PUD?
Yes.
If that's the position, we're not going to sit here and redesign the project, so let's make a decision we can act on. Either we're going to approve the specific plan or not.
So, under PUD and SPUD review criteria, what it says is, "The factors within this section, design standards, should be specifically included as review criteria for the evaluation of PUD or SPUD application. Other factors not listed herein may also be considered in the review process in order to respond to specific design and land use proposals."
Which section is that? What's the heading?
PUD and SPUD review criteria, fifty-nine, one, forty-two, zero, zero.
This is not a PUD or SPUD design review.
But this is the specific plan...
And there's a separate section in the code.
For the SPUD.
And if you go to the specific section that deals with specific plan, you will not find that language. The time to design is at the PUD or SPUD portion.
Site plans and building and occupancy permits for specific uses in buildings shall not be authorized until a specific plan has been approved for all or part of the land area covered by the PUD. Specific plans should be drawn at an appropriate scale, maximum of which one blah blah law, summary showing how the specific plan conforms to the design statement and master development plan map, total dwelling units and the specific plan types, square footage, non-residential uses, parking calculations, all elements of the master development plan map incorporated into the specific plan, including lot layouts for residential uses, typical site plan, preliminary site plans. I mean, I don't think that this is what you think it is. If the PUD is within a special design district, which this is not, I understand that.
But I think it is exactly what I think it is.
I've always understood that at the PUD and SPUD, this is a specific plan. Let me go back to the...
It is part of your PUD approval. This process is part of that approval.
Oh, hundred percent. But then the process is defined in the code.
Well, we were provided originally, at what stage of approval was that?
The zoning approval.
Right. And I have never considered the graphics or site plans that we were given at that stage to tell me anything. I usually toss them, because I think it's non-binding.
We caution people not to look at them when they're presented them in neighborhood meetings, because what makes up sixty percent stone and forty percent stucco could be three thousand different combinations. You can't possibly do it within the confines of the PUD in the sense that we're not here to be a full-on design review board and design these projects. We're here to make sure they're in line with the ordinances, and that when they come back in and the PUD's been negotiated, that they're upheld, and that's, you know, we weren't going to get into the law, and then we did, and if you read fifty-nine, you know, one-four-one-five-zero, it is clear to me in reading this that if they make a summary showing that it conforms to the PUD, that is sufficient. So the question is simply, and I've never understood... I've never understood why our staff reports don't provide a recommendation on these specific plans, because they either conform or they don't, as it aligns with the staff, with the PUD itself. Mr. Brummett, would you comment on that for us, please?
That's correct, yes.
So... I wasn't involved in the original, obviously. I got to say, I mean, versus the original, I like this better. So it's hard for me to not be in... Or, sorry, in support of this item today.
And I respect that opinion, but I don't know that it matters, right?
Sure, sure. But that also means, like, I don't see a reason to, like, to stop this item because of, you know, what I consider really an aesthetics issue. Because I don't see the fundamental change.
I literally live less than a mile from here. It's an open field where homeless people apparently reside. There's two pipelines, they're looking like they're going to, you know, improve those right-of-ways. That looks really good. You know, they might take your trees out someday when they have to repair the pipeline, but...
I wouldn't hear for the first one either, and as far as, you know, high-density or whatever apartments they're putting up, I'm not really, you know, in favor of those. This seems to be a lot more, you know, a better use than, you know, the high-rise apartments and, you know, cramming everybody in there. You know, they're going to add a... Most needed a street light at that point, which I don't know how many street lights we can handle on Sooner at that point, but we... I know we got another one going in on the other side of the highway, and hopefully that helps, but other opinions that it won't, but I don't know. I didn't... I assumed that this was changed from the original PUD, because that's the way it usually is, and I don't know if it changed too much, or, you know, what the big deal is, but I'm in support of it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I must approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item eight is SP five-twenty. It's a special permit to operate a drinking establishment in the DTD two zoning district at eight-fourteen West Sheridan Avenue, Suites B and D.
Hi, my name's Jose Rodriguez, and I am applying for special permit for alcohol for eight-fourteen West Sheridan Avenue, Suite B and D.
My only question about this was why we did them both in one application, but staff is apparently comfortable with that approach. There's no parking requirement because of where we are. And, I mean, is this associated with an existing use? Is there a hotel or... In the two suites in one building?
So, the building's divided up into five suites. Two of them are... Three of them right now are used as bars. Two of them are open. I own two of them, Flashback and Sanctuary, and then we're opening up a third and fourth bar in the area, or in the same building. There's a third one that's opening up here shortly that's already been approved, called Golden Hour. So it's basically just one large building that's been cut up in different suites.
Do we have any questions, the applicants?
I just have a question for us. Did we settle once and for all the issue of whether we have the authority to set the hours as far as when you can... When alcohol can be consumed? Was that settled?
I believe we have.
Okay, just...
Unless they're doing their request through, like, an SPUD, which we can still do a little bit, but here for a straight special permit application, I don't think so.
Got it.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this item today? Commissioners?
Well, if there's no further discussion, I would make a recommendation for approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number eight. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item nine is SPUD eleven-hundred, to rezone six-thirty, north, southeast, fifteen Street, from the R-one and R-two residential districts to SPUD eleven-hundred.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon, Ranik Shah, O K M P Investment, five-hundred, South East Fifty-Fifth, Oklahoma City, seven-three-one-two-nine.
I'm a little confused about what this application really is. Why don't you tell us a little bit of something about it?
The building right in the corner of South East Fifteen and Lindsay have always been due, as far as I know, as the garage for the repair, RO repair, even though the zoning is still in the residential. So seeing we bought this property, we thought that the neighborhood on the west side of the property is the commercial use for RO repair, and also on to the east side, probably also is commercial use for RO repair. So we thought that it'd be best to rezone, I think, to be able to, number one, comply with the code of the city if we are going to reopen that existing building to do repair shop, just to be fit with the surrounding area.
Commissioners?
I have two questions. The incorporation of the industrial light in the uses, in the available uses, is that just to preserve the brewery use?
Excuse me?
In your uses, you have the incorporation of light industrial, so it's a use unit. Is the purpose of including that for preserving the use of a brewery, is that the reason you included it?
No.
No? Okay. Second question, and this is for staff. It says, "In the MBS, screening as required by the scenic overlay design district, or GATA district, is there a minimum standard there in place?"
I believe my partner had talked to the city that they said when we got into the permit process, and then they would advise us what need to be done before we get the building permit.
Of the height of the fence?
Yes.
Yeah. J.J., can you comment on that? I'm just curious.
What I recall is it's very similar to any other screening between commercial and residential, but there are certain types of specific fences that aren't allowed in the design district, like metal fences.
Okay. Well, it seems that... It says in our staff report that they recommend approval of this application, but did we... Did they make a suggestion about the type of fencing or something we want to try to incorporate into this application?
No, they just... They recommended approval as long as they incorporate all of the design district regulations and design regulations, and this is what it does.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this item today? I guess I also have a question for you, J.J. Again, with respect to maximum building height, it seems to me that there's a... The way the code reads, where the property is abutting R-one or R-two, it's twenty feet in one story, is that the sliding scale thing, or is it just where this property is abutting that property? And on this property...
You have to take in consideration the building setback, so you're not going to be really abutting, but within the first twenty feet, you have a certain height, and as you move back, it's stair-step.
So it is, it's the sliding scale thing?
It's stair-step.
Okay, all right. But at any rate, it's topped out at thirty-five feet in two stories. Okay. Commissioners?
If there's no other comment, then I'll make the motion to approve of SPUD eleven-hundred.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number nine. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item number ten is SPUD eleven-oh-seven, to rezone nine-twenty-seven East Reno Avenue from I-one Light Industrial to SPUD eleven-oh-seven.
Is the applicant present? Could you come forward, please, and give us your name and address for the record?
Good afternoon. My name is Fredrick Gatella. I live in one-two-three-three Garland, Texas. I work in Red Sway Construction, and on behalf of the owner, Mr. Joseph... Joseph A. Joseph, I am representing on the ongoing activities on this property, and we have already one existing hotel, it's already operational right now, and the other two is ongoing construction. As far as he's concerned, as he's trying to build another, the last one, the remaining lot, and I think he decided, you know, to get more... I'm just trying to read what he wants to build on the remaining building. Just on an alternative living facility for seniors, where they can live safely, have a better quality of life, socials, and wellness. The facility aims to provide help with their daily needs, opportunities for intellectual stimulations, housekeeping... stimulations, housekeeping and transportation, physically activities and fitness. Above all, the facility top priority to provide a safe living environment and twenty-four hour expert care and medical team available to provide it. So that is the reason why he wants to change it.
So it's an assisted living facility, congregant care for elderly?
Yes, ma'am.
Not a rehabilitation hospital, not that, but, okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicant? It seems like the world's most unlikely place to put something like this, but so has everything else they've built there, so.
Is this speculative or do you actually have somebody that's going to operate this as a?
Yes, there is. And on regards to, if you have any questions on regards to the technicals about the buildings, I'm happy to answer also, but as per the requirements that I receive in here, I think we can provide, you know, a specific code for requirements for this building.
I guess the one question that I would have for you, I'm pretty sure I remember reading that this is going to be a four-story facility and I don't know why or where exactly it says that, but the height is like eighty-five feet. Do we know how many stories it's going to be?
Oh, yes, before, I think we have sit down with the Cortez last week with the owner and it's because the owner, he just said like, why they are allowing us eighty-five feet and then we have only four stories? Can we add more rooms? Yes, you know, I think that they are agree on that one and I believe that Mr. Cortez, when he emailed us to send the revisions of the five-story, we came out like we provide less than the eighty-five feet of the five stories, you know, height of that building. And also on regards to the building square feet, they allowed us up to seventy thousand square feet and our preliminary floor plans on this five-story is less than seventy thousand square feet. And on regards to the, I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry, so we're talking five stories?
Yes, we're going to propose that from four either to five stories to add more.
The four stories comes from the development context in the staff report, but the SPOD application doesn't specify, the MDS doesn't specify stories, I don't think. It just specifies a limitation on height.
Thank you. And you don't think you really need eighty-five feet?
Say it again, ma'am.
You think you really don't need eighty-five feet after all?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. It's going to be a flat roof, whatever that we have existing on the, on that area and it's, it's more easy to have a maintenance if you have a flat roof on the building.
Okay, well, that's a maximum at any rate. Commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant? Is there anyone else here who wishes to be heard on this matter? Have I asked that already? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve item ten.
I have a motion and a second to approve item ten. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
I forgot to say thank you so much for your, thank you.
Item eleven is SPOD eleven eleven to rezone twenty-eight, twenty-three Northwest Fourteenth Street from R one Single Family to SPOD eleven eleven.
Is the applicant present?
Hi, Fallon Magnus, Jolly Bird Home Design, sixteen thirty North Blackwalder.
Tell us what it is you're asking us for.
Sorry. So we are taking currently a single-family residential lot and we want to put six duplex units, well, three buildings, total of six units on the property. So, yeah, sorry. This makes me nervous to stand in front of you guys, so.
You're doing fine, take your time, take a deep breath.
I mean, that's it, really. We're just, we're putting in six total units, two stories. They're not going to be subdivided. The owner has, she's not doing section eight or anything. I think there were some questions about that from some of the neighboring homeowners.
There's not really going to be any signage on this property, is there?
There's not a current plan to, but we did go ahead and provide for that in, in the PUD to allow if they wanted to put a sign later on, and I think they limited it to like sixty square feet, pretty low, like low to the ground, small sign, just kind of maybe something with an address number on it or if they decide to name the property, I don't know. But we just kind of put that in there to cover our bases in the event that they wanted to do that later on.
Is there any open space at all in the property, green space?
Not particularly. There's a, there's a main driveway, parking on one side, and then the units are all pretty tight together. There is space between each of the buildings where there's a small kind of courtyard for each unit.
Sort of dog run kind of?
Yeah, kind of a dog run, but not really a ton of open green space. She wanted to pack as much rentable square footage onto the lot as she could.
Frankly, I think this is pretty, pretty dense, pretty tight, but I have to say that given where it is and what is around it, it, there's no way you could say it's not going to be a step up. So I, I am in support of this application. There's a piece of property directly to the west that is currently zoned R one also. And then beyond that, there's a, is it a Jiffy Lou?
Yeah.
So I mean, this is, this is a, the fact that there's any residential development going in on this lot is kind of miraculous, frankly, and I sort of hope they end up with the other lot to the west.
Yeah, I did want to speak up on this one too because I don't want to sound contradictory in the future if I see this type of project in a neighborhood and deny it because I would. There are things about this project that I wouldn't let happen elsewhere that I will let happen on this lot because of its surroundings. And it's unfortunate what's, what surrounds it as a, as for what the zoning for the lot is and what you guys are trying to do, but, you know, having, having a fence and having no frontage, no real face to the street and the density and, and a lot of those things, like I'm, I'm okay with here and so in the end, all I'm saying as well is I, I'm in support of the item.
I had asked the applicant to make sure that the gate on the property is wrought iron or something that is visible. I think that the full-blown.
And that's not something that was necessarily planned? That's just what, that's just what was put in the render?
Yeah, I understand. What I'd like to eventually see there is something you can see through. I think that's just a little too much, so.
There is a TE. I'm assuming you are aware of the technical valuation that staff provided and are in agreement with it. Just says that you've got to add some language to section one point six. It says said screening may extend to and across the front property line. So staff's recommending that we include that in our recommendation. Is that something you're comfortable with?
Let me ask you before you say that. What, what is the point of that exactly?
What's the implication of that?
Across the front property line? It's unusual.
Because the fence that's shown doesn't meet the code requirement. If she wants to provide for a site-proof fence past the front of the building and across the front, she needs to specifically say that in the, in the PUD.
Oh.
Because a front yard fence has to be four foot see-through wrought iron chain link, you know, so she's.
You're trying to protect the design that you were presented in terms of showing what would need to be included for it to be allowed.
Yes, but she needs to add language to the, to the spud or that fence that she's shown won't be permitted.
And just to be clear, when you talk about a front yard fence, we're talking about the fence, a portion of the fence along Fortyth Street.
The side portion forward of the building, so a short piece, once it goes forward of the building, it's a front yard fence.
Oh, I see.
So that piece that comes down the side, forward of the building and then across the front.
Okay, so, yeah, I get that.
So, yeah, you'll want to add that language.
Yeah, we can totally do that.
Had I asked already if there's anybody else here who wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve SPOD eleven eleven with the one technical valuation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number eleven. Cast your votes. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item twelve is KC seventy fifty-four, the preliminary plat of Flama Place Edition, section five.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers. I've read the staff report and we agree with the TE's. Just request approval of the preliminary plat.
So this is a preliminary and final, basically all together here?
Correct.
And, you know, there's this question about the turnaround versus the stub?
Yes, we've agreed to the temporary turnaround at the end of the street. Either it will be off the side on the property that we don't own, we're talking with those people right now, long history on that, that was sold off to an oil well company, they're out of business out now, so we're dealing with the receivership. If we don't get that worked out, which we think we will, then we will provide the temporary turnaround on our, on our side on our property.
And there's not really any discussion about open space or amenities and that kind of thing, but that is, I assume because it is part of a bigger?
Correct, that's all part of the Palermo Place subdivision.
Okay. And I'm sorry, but do I understand that that's now in separate ownership?
The piece to the, to the west of our project that we're posing here is in a separate ownership right now.
Oh, but, okay, so you're still?
Yeah, the, the rest of the project is, it's the same development.
Okay, great, thanks. Do we have any questions of our applicant? Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this item today? Commissioners?
Move approval of D seven oh five four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number twelve. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
And item number thirteen is the final plat of the same addition.
Again, Chris Anderson, SMC Engineering, just request approval of the final plat. We do agree with all the TE's.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number thirteen. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item fourteen is case PUD seventeen eleven to rezone ten nine oh one Northwood Midwest Boulevard from double A Agricultural to PUD seventeen eleven.
I'm Chairman, Members of Commission Brian Cuny of Hewitt Zorres, twenty-eight thirty-two West Welsher, representing Cosmo Energy. We were here two weeks ago with this case. Our plan, again, just to refresh your mind, is a private office park, I will call it, for this area around the lake. We're going to redo, single-family house up in here, arena for their horses, for them to be able to do their horse business. Building down here, as we call it, exhibits is for him to be able to do some iron work and have a place to have a family for Thanksgiving dinners. A couple of things that we tightened up after talking with you all and talking with Mr. Cravens, Chairman. One of the things Mr. Cravens asked for was could we limit, have two tracks. One track would be limited for the offices so that we can't come back later and put offices wherever we want. So we've limited it that here. We have, as mentioned before, Eagles Nest, we have to stay a hundred feet away from anyway. So we're north of Eagles Nest by a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet away from Midwest Boulevard, which he doesn't want buildings there anyway. And then we've gone over to the edge where on this other drawing, we've shown the rim of our trees that we're going to put along the parking. A couple of other things that we've also added, Chairman asked this morning, we have in the PUD potential thirty thousand square feet of offices, maybe six buildings. She just asked if we would not have a thirty thousand square foot building, so we will amend the PUD to say no buildings larger than fifteen thousand square feet, but we're still limited to thirty thousand total. One of the other things that she had mentioned also is she wanted to see, and it's called backlit lighting for our signage for the offices. She just didn't want a bright light sign out on the Allen Hefner Road or Midwest Boulevard. Her signage has lights behind the letters, kind of a silhouette, so we agree to do that and we'll come up with whatever language staff says we have to do on that. And then one other comment that we'd like to amend to, I know there was concern about heights, so what we've come up with and we'll have JJ help us with language, is no taller than forty-five feet of the actual building from the finished floor of the first floor of the occupied space of offices up to forty-five feet, but we could go up to fifty-five if it's some kind of an architectural feature. So we're obviously, we're not going to have a three-story building up fifty-five feet high, but it could go forty-five with just some kind of an architectural on top of it. We'll work out the language with staff as to how we can restrict that.
Just to clarify my comments to the applicant, since it didn't occur during the meeting, he called me after the fact and I said, based on the comments that were made, you know, by people who were present in our discussion, I think one of the ways that you could reduce the concern that it could be a commercial development down the road is to not allow commercial development to go all the way to the frontage. So by restricting that use from the frontage, you sort of limit the commercial viability that long-term. It was just an idea to try to, you know, appease both the protestants and the concerns that were voiced on the commission in our last meeting.
I have one quick question. Does city staff usually measure the height of building based on the finished floor of the first floor? How, how, do we actually typically determine that?
It goes from grade to the highest point of a flat roof or to the average of a pitch roof.
You specified the finished floor.
And here's why, and I think I showed you last week, contours of the property.
Sure.
Slope down to the center and so what we're possibly going to do is some parking, like a, not a split level house as it used to have, but the walkout basements, those kind of things, is to have parking down below and then the building above, so it would be forty-five feet from the floor of the building, of actual, not the floor of the garage. We're just trying to have, again, be able to park underneath for security, safety. We're way outside of town, so I mean, just for storm shelter purposes, so I want to be careful that we can utilize the terrain also, so.
I, I just wanted to make that distinction because it seemed like that was on purpose.
They normally say from grade, yes, and I'm changing that a little bit to say from finished floor of the first floor of not habitable because it's not habitable, but it's usable office space, so.
Okay. I don't necessarily have a problem with that, I just want to make sure everybody.
You probably have not heard that before, you're right.
And you may have already touched on this, but I think we said at the last meeting that you were going to limit your lot splits to fifteen acres, is that right?
Yeah, it came back in staff report again at five lot, at five acres. We could do it at ten or whatever. I don't know that that's an issue with me, I just, I just, I think, you know, the five acres is fine, I mean, whatever you come up with, I mean, ten?
What is staff's rationale for a five acre, JJ, if you don't mind?
Five acres is really all we could administer. If he wanted to split off a larger tract than that, we would never see it because it don't have to come back to us.
It's in a way for, it's a way for the city to have an effective regulation point then, is yours? Okay. I think that's, I think that's, makes sense to me.
Yeah, and speaking of, I mean, since that is in the TE's, TE number one, to specify the multi-purpose field or areas, we're not going to have any multi-purpose fields. We just put in our document what we envision out there and it's a company softball game or a soccer, you know, we're not going to put in any kind of a lit soccer field or baseball diamonds, those kind of things. So we will specify where it is if we ever decide we're going to do one, but we don't see one happening. Number two is fine. Three, we do not want to do the hundred foot from the riparian banks because there is no creek out there, so three.
That was discussed last time and it was, you could agree to fifty, right? But it wasn't?
No, because there's no creek.
Because there's no creek, that's what?
Right, yeah, so no, we did not want to, did not want to agree to three. Four, we're fine with. Five, we're fine with. And six, we'd like to just amend that to fifty-five feet, as I've worded before.
On items number four and five?
Yes.
There's this language that the lot splits are limited unless water and sewer is available. The combined office space shall not exceed thirty thousand square feet until public water and sewer available. Is that, is that language that you requested?
No.
Language we requested? I mean, can't we just say they are what they are and strike that?
Didn't mean to interrupt. We can, we can take that language out because.
I prefer to take that out.
You prefer to take PE number four or number five out in total?
No, they're, they're leaving the combined office space not to exceed thirty thousand square feet.
Okay.
And I would have a little, and we'll hear from Ms. McNear, a slightly different recollection about the, the lot split thing. And I thought that there was a reason why it was going to be ten or fifteen and not just five. And I thought that there was a reason why it was going to be 10 or 15 and not just 5. But if we don't have any more questions of Mr. Kuhn at the moment, we do have someone signed up to speak, Nancy McNair.
Good afternoon. Nancy McNair, live at 11401 Hillsdale Drive, which is about a quarter mile to the west of this area. Well, I think, I want to thank the developer and the commission. I think that this has kind of come in full circle. A lot of things that were originally problems with me are no longer, because the staff has been able to work a lot of them out. And I think the height and with what Brian's saying is the language about architectural features and the height kind of lessens that. Because the true problem here really is necessarily this development. It's all the developments that have come after this. Whatever you lay the groundwork for here is the next application and the next application and the next application. And there will be more. Right now, even to the west, about a couple hundred feet, there's a large acreage being cleared and all the trees taken out and kind of cleared out. There's a huge for sale sign on it. There will be someone, six months, six years from now, there will be some more developments. So what we're really, what I was really wanting all along is making sure we have this at the right level, so the next ones don't come in crazy. That you've got a good groundwork. I think we've kind of reached a good point here. And I don't have any real, any more problems with what they're trying to do. It seems like it'll be a great development. And I want the rest of the area, as it develops, to do the same thing. And I do think at some point, you are going to have to address the issue of the urban reserve. Is how far down the road on urban development can you go without water, without sewer, without proper streets? And, you know, the first one's great, the next one might be great, but as it goes along, something's going to have to give as far as actual urban services. But, so I don't really have any more issues to discuss. I think that Brian's addressed all of them. And so just as a last comment, I'd like to, for the future, just withdraw the opposition to it and withdraw my comments, I mean, the letter of opposition for the...
Well, I appreciate very much your comments and you coming back to us to let us know that, you know, the process is working. Just to be very, very clear for whoever might be out there listening or watching, I do not consider this an urban development. I would not be in favor of an urban development implication. I do not see this as a precedent for immediate future urban development.
And that's what I want to make sure that doesn't happen.
I understand, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did anybody else have any questions of Ms. McNair while she's here? No? Is there anybody else here present who wish to be heard on this item today? If not, commissioners, comments, questions, concerns, motions?
For the sake of figuring out the motion that needs to be made and what we need to approve, how do we make sure that we're effectively approving all of the changes that Brian just mentioned? Do we need to...
I think, you know, where we are is approval with the elimination of TE number one and three, the amendment of TEs four and five to eliminate the language unless water and sewer is available or until water and sewer become available. And on number six, to amend it to read 55 feet rather than 45 feet, although that's what you asked for originally, isn't it? So we can just eliminate TE number six.
Office tract, there'll be two tracks, and I'll give staff my drawing.
Okay.
So they'll understand what I'm coming to.
So the office is being limited to a particular location within the development?
Any one building will not be larger than 15,000 square feet.
Total 30,000, which is already specified. And the lighting will be...
Lighting will be backlit and silhouette. Rand was telling me the different words we can use, but we'll make sure that we have the right language and accomplish what we've told you we will do. I think that's...
So the administrative and professional office use, 8301, is going to be limited to what is going to be incorporated into your MBS as tract two, which would be the, which would just be that office portion?
Yes.
Outlined on the exhibit you presented to us today?
Yes. Halo-lit, is the term you're looking for. Halo, halo, lit? H A L O? Yeah, yeah. Halo-lit, okay, that's a new word. I'll use that one.
Then I will move, I'm going to do my best to do this. Going to move approval of item 14 with the following amendments to the technical evaluations, that we eliminate TE one, three, and six, that we amend TE four to eliminate the language that reads, unless water and sewer is available, that we amend TE five to say that no individual building...
No, we're going to leave that TE four, or TE five as it is. That's an additional, the no individual more than 15. It's not, it's not in the alternative.
Got it. Okay, so we're adding another TE then, to say that no individual building will be larger than 15,000 square feet. We're adding an additional TE that the lighting will be backlit. And then we are limiting the office uses to a tract...
Two?
To tract two.
Isn't it two?
Yes. We haven't named them yet, but you just did, so we're fine with that. And, okay, and on five, we're going to take out the language about until public water. You took that out of number four, but we're also going to take it out of number five.
And to amend TE five to eliminate the words, until public water and sewer become available.
Set all of them?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 14 as amended. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you all for working with us.
Thank you.
Item 15 is PUD 1712 to rezone 4701 Northeast 122nd Street from PUD 1646 to PUD 1712.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. Here on behalf of the applicant. Also here is Mark Zittauer, planner, and Luke Groundtree with the applicant. This is a piece of property that was before you, a year or so ago. It had a lot of dispute, a lot of discussions, because it included property where the word "subject" is on the map. It went all the way to Coltrane and all the way down to 122nd Street. And so the neighborhood concern at the time was access to Coltrane. And so we modified our PUD at the time. And that little residential tract that's over there under construction now does not connect to this PUD 1646. And so we have not had any conversation with any of the neighbors as a result. So what we're doing is pretty simple. The plan you saw before had the historic highway commercial on the far east side. We added a little commercial. We had the apartments here and cottage homes here. The demand, after they started working on marketing this property, after we got the zoning, was for deeper commercial. With the highway frontage the way it is, so what we've done is eliminated the cottages, slid the multifamily over. We didn't increase any units. All the specifications for building style was all the same. So we're basically increasing the commercial on the highway and reducing the overall number of residential units in the whole area. Access is going to be limited to Boulevard entrance here, and we're going to create a frontage road that'll go behind Flying J and behind the Cracker Barrel and serve the front of the commercial. So the staff recommends approval of the application. We did, at the request of TE number one and conversations with commissioners, we did increase the buffers as recommended, and we increased the percentage of tree coverage from 30 to 35 throughout the whole property. And I've made that modification and submitted it to staff already.
Hey, Tim, associate director, where are you? But while you've got that exhibit up, Mary's looking at it. That frontage road that loops around, will the other uses that you gave mention to, to the south, have access to that road? Will they be able to cut up to that road from...
There's a purposeful connection here.
There is a purposeful, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, this, they don't want, Flying J does not want a connection here, plus we're about eight to 10 feet lower than their property. Yep. And then the last comment I have is regarding the TE number two. The staff has requested that we take out the use unit that we've created, limited to coffee shop and deli or similar use. This is a use unit that has evolved over time, that we've used in cases that we don't want to specifically say wide-open door for drive-through restaurants and things like that. So we've, we've kind of created this, or this has morphed over time to what we've used many times. The specific reason in this case is that we cannot have the specific use unit for fast foods, drive-ups, drive-throughs, because it's in the contract for purchasing the land, Flying J owns this land, that we can't compete with any other commercial uses that they've developed on the frontage. And so to allow for a coffee shop or maybe a donut shop or something in the commercial core, we've added that, the use unit with this specific restriction. And so we'd like to leave that in.
This, you know, language that we've developed, because we can't say, "like a Starbucks."
Right.
Right?
Correct.
And it's just, you know, we're not permitted to regulate by name. So we have to find a way to describe what we're talking about that makes sense to developers. And this is what we've come up with, so. I don't know why staff is asking us to remove it. It doesn't make any sense. We use it all the time.
Would a Starbucks even be allowed under this language, though?
Probably not, a Starbucks, but probably an off, local coffee.
Yeah, okay.
There was one question about the plating.
Yes, I, so it's not real clear in the PUD. So we have agreed to, I'll clear it up before we go to council, but there's language in there about the specific plan approval. So originally, and this is language that was in the original PUD, originally had platted single-family lots, which don't come back for a specific plan. And so what we've made clear in the PUD, or I will make clear, is that we will come back for the specific plan of the multifamily.
Those are dangerous words at the moment.
After today, I regret that I've already sent that email.
Tim, could the TE two regarding the limiting coffee shop and deli, could that be handled through private government?
Well, the concern I would have would be if we just carte blanche allows the use unit, then we may not get the approval of our land or the seller in this case.
It's just very difficult to administer. It's just like the question we had here, well, is a Starbucks allowed? Well, is an Arby's a deli? You know, we have to have a conversation every time one comes in for a permit.
That's why they pay you the big bucks, JJ.
I would assume, though, as we've done on a lot of items, that you could discuss it with Flying J?
And if we can modify that before we go to council, I'd be happy to do that.
Commissioners, are there any other questions for Mr. Johnson?
So everything else, just to be clear, everything else about the original PUD is the same, except the changes you've articulated, just nothing's...
That's correct.
Okay. And for clarity, TE one, you're good with?
Yeah, we've already made that change.
And you've already made the change, okay.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve item 15 with the technical evaluations amended to eliminate TE two.
We're not doing that. Are we?
Eliminating TE two?
Yeah.
We'd like to eliminate TE two, but I agree that if we can...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, we're doing that, sorry. We're eliminating TE two.
That's the motion.
We're not eliminating the language. We're eliminating the TE.
We're eliminating TE two, yeah.
Okay.
Which keeps the language.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 15 without TE two. Could you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved.
Item 16 is case S P U D 1104 to rezone 4304 Northwest 23rd Street from O2 Office District to S P U D 1104.
Is the applicant present?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Luis Diaz. Probably at us 4304 Northwest 23rd. I'm applying for zoning from O2 to S P U D 1104, should be able to run a retail store. We're currently running as a medical dispensary.
Commissioners, we have several people signed up to speak on this matter. Before we do that, I'll tell you that Commissioner Coffey and I met with the neighbors and the applicant a week ago and discussed the application with them and their concerns and questions, some of which we were able to answer and others we were not able to fully answer, at least in a way that satisfied their concerns. So, of course, the specific use that this applicant is going to make of this property is not really that relevant to our decision. It's a retail use. That's kind of where we are with that. If we have any questions of the applicant, we can ask him. And if not, I'll call the other people who want to be heard on this item up to speak. Okay. Austin Klosowski, my best guest.
Good afternoon. Austin Klosowski, good job.
All right.
2205 North Shawnee Avenue. So in Musgrave-Pennington neighborhood. I'm here with my four colleagues on the Musgrave-Pennington Neighborhood Association Leadership Board. We are in opposition of this rezoning. It's just our position that, I mean, these are ultimately single-family homes on the south side of 23rd Street, right here. And some of them are still residential. I think it looks like the ones surrounding right now are residential. Some are office space, but it's just our position that it's not a good fit for retail. I'd also like to point out that the other side of I-44, 23rd Street, south side, those homes have pretty much been kept as office space. And I feel that those associations have fought pretty hard to keep those homes on that, on the other side of 44, you know, zoned properly. And I would like the same kind of standard to be applied to our side of the highway as well. We've met with two people that live directly behind the property, who are in opposition, couldn't be here today due to childcare, but Ryan Chambliss and Dale Hall, I believe, were at our meeting on, when was our meeting? Monday. So my colleague, Ryan Lurch, I think, might speak next, and he can give you more insight into our association meeting that we had on Monday to discuss this issue.
I do believe we have, you received probably by email, letters of opposition from the two gentlemen that you're referring to.
I'd like to say something. He says that most of those properties are residential, but it's not true. Most of those properties are, are businesses. And the properties are, probably, Bacon's are, at one point, were residential. But the zoning is O2. And some of them operate as, I believe that there's a doctor clinic in there. There's also a view hall. There are other businesses running in that area.
Yeah, I mean, it shows on our, we see that reflected in our staff report as to which property along the frontage of 23rd is still zoned. And it appears that there's still one that is zoned, R1 residential. The others that surround you, I see they're zoned O2. So that's in our report. We see that.
Okay.
If you'll let the other folks speak, then we'll give you another chance to answer. I appreciate that. Are you finished?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lurch, do you want to come talk to us?
Hello, my name is Ryan Lurch, 2220 North Quapa Avenue in Oklahoma City. I am with the Musgrave-Pennington Leadership Committee for the Neighborhood Association, and I'm representing their voice. We met with Mr. Diaz. He was nice enough to chat with us and talk about his plans for the area, talk about concerns for our neighborhood. the area, talk about concerns for our neighborhood, and while we do not, in general, have issue with the business he plans to run, our issue is the precedent this would set for turning this strip along Northwest 23rd into individualized retail properties, single entries, small parking lots, intermixed with some residential. The map that I looked at as far as zoning showed much more residential properties along that strip. It seems to be quite a mix. Reports from neighbors are that there are people using some of these office spaces as residences as well, so it would be a bit of increased traffic amongst neighbors that are trying to just live. We've got, my apologies. These residential-style buildings, we do not feel is an appropriate use for retail. I've tried to do some research. The businesses that I've found using for similar purposes did not appear to be beneficial to the area. I could not find many that appeared to be contributing towards increased value for the general area. Uses in this manner would not be conducive to pedestrian use, it would be a hike to get from retail to retail if you were not driving. And another point that was brought up in our meetings is that the Windsor area business group touts our area as the 10-minute neighborhood. It's 10 minutes away from absolutely anything that you would need. There are, I went out last night and verified, there are five other marijuana dispensaries within a single mile of this property, even one that moved in just very recently across the street from the property in question. That has a feel of oversaturating the market. Our neighborhood doesn't feel that, under these circumstances, we should allow this strip to go this direction, since there's so much other already available. In addition to that, there's plenty of available currently zoned space in the area. Windsor Hills Shopping Center, just a half-mile down the road or less, has five vacant spaces. There's a vacant space across the street, there's others that I have researched, and it's not coming to mind right now. But we have a quiet neighborhood. We've heard that this section of 23rd is labeled as a retail corridor. We disagree with that. We believe that we are in between retail, we are across from retail, but the style of the properties on that side are not developed for such use, especially if this starts cascading and dominoing into piecemeal retail here and there and everywhere. It would be better zoned and bought up by a large corporation, and maybe developed in a broader sense instead of one property at a time. I believe I sent an email to at least a couple of you with some limitations that we would request if the council disagrees with Musgrave-Pennington's position on this. Have you all had a chance to look over that?
I believe all those have been distributed, and I'll go through those here.
Okay. Wonderful.
Make sure that's all part of the record.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Sure. Do we have any questions of Mr. Lurch? Thank you. I have one more person, Patty Schubert.
Hi, my name is Patty Schubert, I live at 3812 Northwest 22nd, and I'm part of the leadership team. And on our last meeting, we had a unanimous vote that we do oppose having retail in our neighborhood. We don't need any more retail, we have plenty of retail across the street, down the street, everywhere you look, and there are vacant properties if he chooses to move, and that's all I have to say.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Schubert? Thank you. I mentioned earlier that we had met with the neighbors and the applicant, and while the neighbors, you know, are opposed generally to the idea of this retail conversion, and then there are some issues with that. Probably each of us, somewhere in our ward, has a street like this, 23rd Street is one of the worst. It's Ward 3 and Ward 6, and maybe even Ward 1 on the west side of Broadway Extension, and then on the east side, it's mostly all, I think, Ward 7, so. But this conversion of individual and often very modest residential units into commercial or office and commercial uses, just on a lot-by-lot basis, is problematic for a lot of reasons. I actually thought we had a specific policy with respect to this, I find it was just practice rather than policy. But, you know, it makes it difficult to control, you know, access, to accumulate access, and so you've got uses that generate traffic, but you've got a driveway every 50 feet onto a major arterial street. They tend to be, I mean, just to be realistic about it, they tend to be not terribly well-maintained, they tend to be properties that don't have a lot of money put into them, and so they don't do much to contribute to the overall positivity of any area. Very often, the parking is just, the front yard paved over, there's, you know, rarely any limited, any shared access and that kind of thing. You have a proliferation of signage, they're just a mess. And so we don't encourage that, having said that. And this stretch of 23rd Street from Meridian to Portland is a pretty stark example, you know, the north side of the street is more or less entirely, maybe not entirely, there may be a little tiny strip of it that's still residential. But the south side of it is just entirely populated by these little, you know, residential units that were long, long ago converted into office zoning of one kind or another. Not all of them are used for office uses, but I think, you know, the tendency for something like that to create a precedent that people think, well, this will increase the property value, I might as well go ahead and do this, even if they don't intend to make an office use of it, is something that I think is a problem with upgrading that conversion now from office to commercial. In some ways, it kind of discourages the actual accumulation or assembly of the property into pieces of property that make more sense for commercial development. If you look at 23rd Street, a little further east, more east of May, you see that there are some of those kinds of assemblies going on where, but then you're talking about, you know, having to go through that process. If you increase the property value by upgrading the zoning, whether or not it's actually an upgrade to the property or to the surrounding area, it seems to me that it makes it less likely that you'll have that assembly. And for us, and for the long-range planning, I think that's problematic. Having said all that, we have a very willing applicant here, who has acquired a piece of property for which he has a very specific use, that in fact, he doesn't have the zoning to operate, so.
I'd love to speak on the slow change of the zoning, if I could, real quick.
Sure.
It's my opinion that, we've got a ton of this residential on corridors like 23rd, and yes, it's making the change, because who could imagine living in these? Personally, these are terrible sites for homes. We, as a city, came through and changed the character of the street from a residential street to a commercial street. I mean, I can't imagine anybody from the Neighborhood Association thinking that they would like to live in those homes. They're not good for homes. Like, I just don't believe that. Sure, people live there right now, I get it, I'm not trying to disparage their home, but it's just we changed the character of the street, and cities aren't static, they're meant to grow and change over time. That is why this commission exists, in my opinion. And so I think...
I don't think anybody is advocating that the homes along 23rd Street, it was the stretch of 23rd Street, should remain residential.
Well, I just think, to me, this seems natural, and, you know, it seemed like the discussion was that it was problematic.
Well, the question is whether it is beneficial for it to increase now further, it's already increased from residential to office, and so the question is whether it's beneficial for it to increase further into individual retail units.
Well, I can't, personally, I can't think of a better buffer between a street like 23rd and a neighborhood than commercial, whether that be retail or office.
And otherwise, it's a strip mall.
Well, I think there's a lot of difference between retail and office, but...
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
For the sake of clarity, though, the existing property is already being used as retail, right? Am I missing?
Since October.
Okay.
Yeah. It's zoned office.
Zoned office, but it's currently being used as retail. So then, I guess, from the experience of going to the neighborhood meeting, is the issue of being afraid of the traffic, has that been realized? Like, has there been an issue with the existing retail use that has made the residential uses problematic for the people from the neighborhood behind?
You know, I don't think, I don't think that is particularly problematic. Frankly, this is a unit where, again, from a planning standpoint, might not be ideal, but it has an entirely paved front yard. There's not, it's not possible to get between the houses here with a car, so there's no parking in the back. I think the traffic issue on these kind of conversions is more one for us than it is for the neighbor. It has to do with those, you know, driveways every 50 feet and the access onto an arterial. Those driveways are still there if they're residential uses or if they're office uses, but when you upgrade that then into commercial uses, I think, you know, there's no question that you're likely to upgrade the traffic. Whether this particular retail use is causing a huge change or not, you know, is not really the only question, because we can't limit it to this particular use, it's going to be a retail use. We're going to actually limit some of the uses, and if I can read those, I will, and then we can talk further if we want to. Despite the fact, as I said, we have a very willing applicant here, he's been very cooperative, he was, but with us and with the neighbors and fielded questions and answered them as best he could, and has been willing to amend the application, even knowing that he was not going to have the support of the neighbors in exchange for that. The following uses are what are going to be allowed: dwelling units and mixed use, administrative and professional office, animal sales and services grooming, but it's going to be limited so that no animals will be kept overnight, building maintenance services, medical services restricted, repair services, consumer, custom manufacturing, retail sales and services general, but excluding specifically tobacco and smokeless or vape stores and liquor stores. The neighbors very specifically wanted the record to reflect that the following uses would be prohibited: massage parlors, automotive parking lot as a principal use, automotive cleaning and repair light equipment, automotive cleaning, automotive and equipment cleaning and repair heavy equipment, and that includes both tire stores and repair shops, childcare centers, convenient sales and personal services, including tattoo and piercing parlors.
But we don't have to exclude the uses, right? I mean...
But they would like the record to reflect that those, actually, none of those uses will be permitted within the use units that he has allow, that he is asking for and that are part of the ask here, but the neighbors wanted the record to reflect that those uses are very specifically prohibited on-site. And in addition to that, there will be a site-proof fence of at least eight feet high across the south property line, all the lighting will be installed no higher than the eaves of the structure, and the hours of operation will be no later than 9:00 PM. So the applicant has agreed to make those changes at the request of the neighbors, even knowing that he would not have their support for the application in exchange for that, and so that's really what we're voting on.
Additionally, agreed to no liquor sales, no tobacco, smokeless cigarettes, or vape stores. Did we miss anything from the Neighborhood Association, other things?
And I have that in writing that I can provide to you, so. Do we have any other questions, comments, concerns?
I'm, I appreciate everybody's opinion on the, you know, expansion. I think 23rd is absolutely a retail corridor. I think a lot of times we get into conversations in here that, at least in my opinion, right, just my opinion, are outside of our purview. What is within our purview, in my view, are use and density, because that's really what zoning is, and this, for me, is a density issue. I think, to Commissioner Powers' point, when you increase the use from an office to a retail use, in a place where you're going to have a single curb cut and three traffic spots, but you're inviting the public in for retail sales, you are, I bet JJ could give me a calculation on the trip increase that that creates on a per-site basis. And when you take a little piece like this and you carve it out for retail sales, and you do that up and down a street across 15, 16 properties, you are going to create traffic issues that are something we are supposed to be concerned about, something that we are supposed to be mindful of when we make these zoning decisions. And for me, this objectively reminds me of the case we had where recently, where there was an industrial property that was going to intrude further into the neighborhood. It's, if I would actually be much more supportive of an application that came forward to comprehensively rezone maybe seven or eight of these properties at once, so you could alter these curb cuts, and you could really help create a transition, and at the same time, provide protections for the neighborhood, that ensure that retail doesn't intrude further or erode the quality of the area. So this is a step too far for me on those grounds. 23rd is a retail corridor, and for the HOA, it is a corridor, and it's a primary arterial, but it is not set up for this, and I think if we sort of, I'm not using this term legally, don't pass out, Dan, if we spot-zone this thing, in the sense that we just create this one island of C3, I think we're setting ourselves up potentially to have problems here that we don't necessarily want to create, especially on a street that's carrying this much traffic. I just...
Well, and, you know, to be realistic about it, we have a letter in support of this application from a property owner that owns four more of these properties. So, I mean, I don't think it takes a great leap of imagination. If we do this on an individual lot basis, there's a whole lot of other lots out there that would be happy to come in and do it just as well. And it does, I think, discourage the assembly of land for exactly the kind of development we would prefer to see.
That's a, that's a good argument, actually, that you're discouraging it. I just, for me, because I don't know, I can't take the leap as a commissioner that I'm going to zone something that's going to increase traffic coming in and out of a single-lane driveway when there's no center-turn lane, right? driveway when there's no center-turn lane, right? When you're going to have people making left turns going in and out. So, I just, I can't get there on this, so that's where I am.
Just to respond to that very quickly, I would like to say that, at least personally, you know, I treat my reviews on the committee as, like, I can be a conscientious objector of the rules and guidelines we have in place. We're all allowed to use our brain and decide, well, does this make the most sense here or not? And whenever it comes to, you know, something like, that's tangentially connected to this, like parking minimums, we negotiate that all the time here. So we're not beholden necessarily to the rules and regulations of the city. And frankly, I wish we had parking maximums. I don't care about most of that whenever it comes to it being a traffic issue or, you know, some of the concerns of my fellow commissioners. I hope that in our upcoming effort, we can address that. But for me, it's not an issue. I think, to me, this makes sense. I'd be in support of it, and that's-
We don't have to talk anymore about this, but I will say that the traffic issue is not just about parking. It has to do with access to the site and the disruption of the traffic flow along an arterial. And, yeah, and as Commissioner Cravens points out, there's no center-turn lane here. I mean, you're talking about, and 23rd Street is a raceway. I mean, with a driveway every 50 feet, so.
Well, I mean, there's plenty of commercial up and down 23rd that exists currently. I mean, I went to Solotai the other day, like, this past week, and it has no center-turn lane there. And it is, got a single curb cut, it's got a very limited parking. I just don't see the difference, I guess. And for me, like, whenever I think about this corridor, it's compatible, it's consistent with what I've seen elsewhere, and it works. It's not awesome to drive down 23rd, I think we can all agree, but I'm okay with that. That's what it is right now.
And to my line of questioning, I agree with what Commissioner Highsmith has said. And with my comment, it's already being used as retail.
Illegally.
Illegally, yes.
And so, that goes to my point, which was, if there's been no actual, if there's been no actual disruption-
Because there hasn't been a wreck out in front of it yet? I mean, you know, what actual disruption would there be?
Well, I mean, if we have a wreck in front of Solotai, are we coming back?
That's the president's of ban office use and using it, and then coming here after the fact, and then trying to get a retail use.
Well, let's see where we are. Somebody make a motion. Let's take a vote.
I move to approve item 16.
Second.
As amended.
As amended. Excuse me, as amended.
Did you have something you wanted to say, Commissioner Coffey? You're being very quiet. Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve item number 16 as amended. Cast your votes, please. Does someone want to make a motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to recommend denial to City Council on SPOD 11, sorry. Thank you. 1104.
All right. Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to deny item number 16. Did you cast your votes? It's denied.
Item 17 is SPOD 1108 to rezone 2928 Southwest 15th Street from R1 Single Family, R2 I1 and I2 to SPOD 1113.
Is our applicant present?
My name is Stanley Dobbs. I own the property there, 16th and May and 15th and 14th. And we're trying to, we have a revenue income coming off that property now that would be disastrous at this point if we lose it, trying to work it. We have a project we're wanting to bring in there at some time. If we can get it through the United States Supreme Court, it'll greatly increase the job market here in Oklahoma and the south side of Oklahoma City will be a definite improvement to it. I strove the last 10 years trying to bring that neighborhood up. We renovated 17 or 18 houses to modern, convenient houses, and the real estate that's R1 on that property, I own, except for the triplex at the end and the tar shop at the other corner of May.
I wanted to be very sure that you are understanding the technical evaluations on this application.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I've got shell shock and echo in here affecting my ears.
I'm sorry. I wanted to be sure that you understand the technical evaluations in the staff report.
Yes.
That if this application is approved, you will not be able to store vehicles on the north side of the property, and that it will have to be screened from the south side of the property. So the storage on the south side of the property will have to be enclosed.
I've already got the material fenced for site-proof.
I just wanted to be very sure. Frankly, I cannot support this application. I think these kinds of uses are so completely inconsistent with the scenic river overlay. And there's been, you know, 12 years here of time. The uses that are being made of the property are not consistent with the existing uses. They're not consistent with the uses that the city would like to see made of this area. They're not consistent with surrounding uses, and so, I'm not in support of this application. But I'll certainly listen to whatever comments, questions, and concerns the rest of you have about it.
So this item came in because your current use for it is non-conforming, correct, with the underlying zoning?
Well, we thought we were conforming, but we don't have a site-proof fence on it. But it was I2, owned a lot of it for, used to be Case Tractor facility there. And they had all types of machinery and everything in those back lots.
So, the underlying zoning is I1 and R2 currently. How long have you been using it for the auto storage?
10 years. Maybe 15. There's a body shop on the other side of 15th, and he rents that property off of me, and he rented that for storage, and he does his work in the body shop and rebuilds cars, builds them. But he doesn't do the work over on my side of 15th.
Did you have a question? It's obviously an area where a lot of car storage happens. I can see it all over, you know, in reviewing this project, and I do think that's a big bummer for a neighborhood. It's not great to put car storage, outdoor salvage yards around with residential. So, I think the more that we can chip away at the existing use of these areas as outdoor salvage, the better for the neighborhoods. I'm, to be honest, though, I'm kind of on the fence. Staff has recommended approval with the TEs. I can see how that would make it better. Yeah, Riverfront did too, as far as recommendation. I, I don't know, like, I think this is one of those where I'm going to have to say what I've said before and look to the wisdom of my fellow commissioners to help me in my ward, kind of think about how to approach this, because I'm on the fence.
Cool. Just real quick, Chairwoman, you said that it wasn't consistent with the surrounding, but I think it is, though, right? I mean, if this is going to exist, that's what's all around it. Other than a church, tire shop, auto storage, auto sales, I mean, this is what is here now, and it is consistent with what's there.
These are residential uses to the south. Residential uses to the west.
I'm not, I'm not going to pass judgment on the uses, but it is fair to characterize this area as being, there is a lot of this use going on. That is true. You drive the stretch, you do see a lot of this use. So, it, I mean, but they're stacked up above the fences. And I think what I'm encouraged by in the application is that the applicant is willing to do the things to try to eliminate that, and we're gaining, I'm assuming staff agrees, that we're gaining some teeth here to better enforce the ordinance we have to protect those neighborhoods without, you know, where I have an issue, what's different for me objectively is when you have somebody come in and they've been operating for four months and then they want to get rezoned versus you have somebody who's been there for 15 years plus, and the area is in line with the character, and you're going, you know, what do you do here? And in one area of this, it's I1, it's not a step too far to allow what he's doing beyond that. So I'm torn, too. I think I lean in favor of it as long as I'm assured from staff that we're gaining some teeth to try to enforce the limitation on this use being something that's, you know, not at least some improvement for the character of the neighborhood. That's where I am. JJ, you want to enlighten me on that?
We're going to, definitely going to gain the screening. You're going to gain some setbacks in landscaping that you don't have now that's going to pull it more into the interior of the site. And it'll give us a document that code enforcement can go out and enforce, and we're going to get the cars off of the north side and out of the overlay district.
So they're, if they're stacked up above the fence, then we have the, we would have the ability here, which we do not now, to regulate that.
Right.
That's a win for me.
My contract with my tenant is that he cannot stack cars. I won't allow that. And when we get the site-proof fence up, there won't be nothing above the fence level that they can see. But that's part of my deal, is he cannot stack cars, and he cannot work on them over there. He has to take them to his body shop.
Well, we're glad you're being an active property owner. We just need to make sure, at least I want to be sure from my standpoint, that the city has enforcement ability that it doesn't have today if we're going to allow it to continue. So, for me, I'll take that as determinative, and I'll support your application.
Is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on this application today? Commissioners?
I'll move approval on SPOD 1108.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 17. Cast your votes. It is approved. I voted.
Thank you very much for your time.
Item 18 is SPOD 1109 to rezone 818 Northwest 65th Street from R1 and SPOD 1042 to SPOD 1109.
David, before you get started, I'm recusing from this case.
Mr. Box?
Yes, David Box, 542 Callacord Drive, here on behalf of the advocate, who is Mr. Clay Farha, who is also with us here today. This is a SPOD application that, in terms of regulations and uses, is identical to that of what you see on the screen in PUD 1653 and SPOD 1042. Mr. Farha has been actively acquiring property in this area quite some time. This is probably the third or fourth time we've come in with an application. Each time, the regulations are identical to the others. I do need to address the technical evaluations due to some oddities that I see in here, specifically TE number one. While we can agree to the lion's share of that, the last portion of the sentence that says "and associated amenities such as showers in the buildings to encourage bicycle commuting", I'm not sure that that's really a technical evaluation. I'm not sure what we're seeking to do there. We feel encouraged. However, I don't think that Mr. Farha is willing to agree to put showers in these buildings, so I would ask that we strike after the word "parking," perhaps put a sentence there and strike "and associated amenities such as showers in the buildings to encourage bicycle commuting." TE number two, on the bullet points, we can't agree to bullet point number two or bullet point number five, because this is part of an overall, what will be an overall larger development. We're not sure what the specific FAR on this site might be. We're not sure where buildings on this site might be. So those two bullet points would run contrary to what potentially could exist. And then finally, TE number three, we are fine with that, even though we do have the utmost faith in the planning director's taste when it comes to architecture, but we'll take it out.
I just can't, I just can't let this go without asking the question. Where did the language in TE one come from?
No idea.
From ASA. Can someone tell me that?
ASA.
Yeah, did ASA write that in? Was that a write-in?
A ghostwriter.
Can someone, please?
Yes, Sarah Welch Planning, yes, that's because it's in a TOD district. That's all. It's okay, we're fine deleting it. And I can talk about TE two if you're interested, but...
Just to be clear, after puzzling over this for some time and actually going back to my grade school sentence diagram techniques, what I understand TE one to be saying is that you're wanting to add language that would at least allow for that kind of flexibility. It's not that you're asking the applicant to-
No, we're not asking for that. We're actually, we're actually asking for the SPOD to allow for the shared parking because you have seen us a couple of different applications that have come through in this area, PUD 1653, there's one to the east, and that language we would like, because we imagine this will all be developed together, and we're trying to match the zoning so that it wouldn't does-
Although, as it turns out, we may not have any ability to exercise any, you know, discretionary review over that, but be that as it may.
Well, the, and then on TE two, those are just the same TEs that were included in the last ones, and it's just saying that whenever possible and applicable, the design would try to do these things. So, it's up to you how you want to handle that.
I think that it is a little difficult to include this language as a TE if it's really just a suggestion. So I would be okay with deleting bullet point number two and bullet point number five under TE two.
Just a matter of future, could we, is there a reason we use the bullet points instead of like 2A, B, C, D, E, F? Yeah. I mean, honestly, for preserving of the record, I think it would make more sense to avoid bullet points.
That's a staff thing.
I know.
And I also would be very okay with putting a period after bicycle parking and leaving off the "and associated amenities such as showers in the building to encourage bicycle commuting," though I'm all in favor of encouraging bicycle commuting.
Maybe that's why ASA recused himself.
That's coming in the next round of regulations.
Is there anybody else? Under, I made this note to myself, under the use unit classifications, there's a limitation on A363 Retail Sales and Services General, that it's limited to accessory use and individual office development. And the question I had to myself was whether you wanted to include or commercial lodging. Sometimes hotels have those as associated or accessory uses, and I wondered if you wanted to leave yourself that option.
Yeah, we can do, I think that the commercial lodging has it, but I have an abundant-
Oh, you think it does, under the, under the use unit description?
Would a commercial lodging allow associated commercial use, associated retail sales as part of the commercial lodging? Okay.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this item today? Commissioners?
There is no more discussion. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPOD 1109.
As amended?
As amended. Yeah, forgive me. So, just to- So just amending, just to cycle through it again, striking from TE one, the language "and associated amenities such as showers in the building to encourage bicycle commuting", and under TE number two, striking bullet point number two, which states place buildings at the street with parking behind, and bullet point number five, achieve a minimum FAR of 0.5, and striking TE number three. I get all that?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. Item number 18 is amended. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved. I look forward to seeing a unified plan for this area when you have one.
Item 19 is S.P.U.D. 1110 to rezone 1047 Broadway Extension from P.U.D. 870 to S.P.U.D. 1110.
Yeah, once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive on behalf of the applicant. Multiple members of the applicant's team are in the room today. This is an S.P.U.D. that would take what is currently a heavily commercialized rezon, or zoning district that also allows some industrial uses, reduce down those uses, and then we do add a provision for a non-accessory sign. What you can see here from this view is, what is proposed is an office building that would be, you know, upscale office building on the corner. You can see the associated parking behind the building, and then you can see, you know, the sign location. Staff does recommend approval. There are four TEs, all of which we agree to. The question was asked to me, because the reference in the staff report as to the, in the narrative on page two, Spud proposes the following changes. It talks about a reduction in number of commercial uses. But when you look at the P.U.D. 870, it is just straight C3. There are no limitations whatsoever. As the commission knows, with straight C3, you have somewhere north of 60 different uses that would be allowed. In addition, there are some industrial uses allowed. So we have taken that and reduced it down to the limited number of uses you see beginning on page three and then going over onto page, excuse me, beginning on page two, going over onto page three. So with that, be happy to answer any questions. Again, staff does recommend approval. We agree with the technical evaluations.
Well, I am absolutely, you know, opposed to this. I think when the original P.U.D. was negotiated, it's a large, it's a difficult tract, it has a lot of challenges, and I think that the P.U.D. reflects the trade-off that, you know, is appropriate to make that worthwhile. What's being done now is a piece of that, probably the most undevelopable piece of that property is being carved off. It's, I think, 100% in the FUD pain, and in order to pay for that, they want a 50-foot EMD billboard. And I can't imagine a time when we would have ever approved that along a highway or anywhere else in the city of Oklahoma City except possibly Bricktown, but we'll get to that later. I am astonished that there's not a TE to remove the request for the EMD signage. And I wouldn't approve any kind of a billboard at this site, let alone an EMD signage, so that's me.
If we think about signage, I mean, where you would expect to see a sign like this is exactly here, along a highway.
We spent so much time controlling the signage along the east side of the highway here on those hospital and quasi-hospital uses there, talking about them, controlling them, limiting them, and to instead put up, I mean, you know, the great Mathis Brothers EMD billboard was what started our EMD sign code, so it was, you know, so I, I'll stop talking, whatever you like.
Yeah, just, I mean, the point being, you know, we, it's a commercial corridor. This is where you would expect to see signs like this. We meet state and municipal spacing requirements. And so I think the use is appropriate along a highway.
I would assume that that's why staff doesn't have a TE, because it meets the spacing requirements, which is the ordinance on point for those. Is that fair? Yeah?
I don't love signage either. I guess my take on this, and the reason it's not an issue for me, is also, I don't think the highway or areas that are highway-like are beautiful places to begin with. And frankly, I don't care if we do billboard signage along those corridors because they're never going to be a place where I'm trying to hang out and have a care about the aesthetics of the area. So that's my take.
I will say to that, you know, 35, 40 years ago, a lot of people thought that way, and that was why we had a bunch of junkyards and, you know, industrial uses along the highways. There has since been sort of a evolution of that thinking, that these highways and byways are people's introduction to the city and that they need to be attractive and to present this sort of our best face, which is, it might be not an EMD sign.
I would propose then that we go a step further and remove all highways from the city, but, I mean, I know that most people will find that hilarious.
And that? I think the compromise was to remove all, as much signage as we could from the highways, Is there anybody else here who wishes to be heard on this item? I have another just kind of generalized difficulty with this application. You know, given that you've got so much work to do just to even make it developable, it's hard to imagine that you're really in a position to make any kind of decision about what you'll eventually do with it, but why that would need to change from the existing P.U.D. other than the sign. I mean, so in my view, we're changing the zoning on this property to permit a 50-foot EMD billboard.
Sure, there's a very real possibility they could build a billboard and knock the building. Yeah.
So, just, there's that. Have I asked, is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
I move approval of item 19.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item number 819. I'm sorry. Cast your votes. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 20 is S.P.U.D. 1112 to rezone 13700 Southwestern Avenue from S.P.U.D. 491 to S.P.U.D. 1112.
Good afternoon, I'm Steve Buchanan. My address is 11801 Southwestern, and I own the property where I'm talking about today. The, I'm also a developer. I developed Metal Lake Farms at 107th and Southwestern, which is a housing area, office area, business area, and I have a business park in there as well. I purchased this property a couple of years ago and felt like it was a beautiful piece of property. I wanted to do much the same of what I did in my other location with it. When I bought it, there was only two uses that were allowed. One was for a moving company and one was for professional office and administrative offices. Once I started on that, I didn't realize how restrictive that was. My first tenant that wanted to go in was a doctor, but a doctor doesn't fall within that designation. That's really why I'm here today is to update the zoning where I can bring in the same types of people that I have in my other, other development, which is C3 as well for the office there. So what I would like to do is, there is another zoning that's directly across the street from me, and it is C3. This one is C1 right now. There is a C3 across the street. And what we tried to do is, is just to look at the zoning that they had that was approved in the past by you all and the council, and that's really what I'm asking for as far as the uses within this property. Have any questions for me?
Are you aware of the TEs and an acceptance of them?
There is, I think, two TEs I'm willing to accept, the 50-foot buffer on the east side. That's fine with me. I believe the other TE's been removed. Is that somebody from?
Still on mine. The drive on Western must align with Southwest 138th or offset 150 feet.
I talked to them yesterday and went to traffic, and they said that they were going to have a representative here to talk about that today.
Okay.
That, that comment was made by planning staff, not traffic management staff. I guess there's an existing provision for a drive that's existing to be able to be maintained legally, which I believe that the large, there are two drives on the site, residential drive and then the larger drive. Where our staff comment from the planning department came into play was addressing some automobile connectivity policies about limiting curb cuts on arterial streets, and that primary entrance point should be aligned with access points immediately across the street for traffic safety, since the intersection that's immediately across the street is shown to have a future signal. The spacing of the drive being so close to that intersection would just pose some complications for traffic maneuvering and confusion. So that was our comment rather than traffic management. Just wanted to clarify that.
So what would be the issue with compliance with TE two?
Well, when I, when I bought the property, it had a Spud on it, and one of the things on the Spud showed the driveway location on it. That driveway location's been there since 2002. I went back to Google Earth and kind of looked at it to see where it was at, and so it's my idea that my driveway was an existing driveway, always has been there. This was a commercial property back in 2008 or '09. It's been on a Spud since that period of time, but when, my understanding is, is on the staff report, when they put the development end across the street, they did not require them to line up with my driveway. So.
That's Southwest 138.
Yes.
It's not a driveway, right? It's actually a drive.
It's a street.
It's a street.
Yeah, it's a street.
I would think that you would want your drive to line up with a signalized intersection.
I don't think you can, though.
I can't, this is my problem. I bought the property based off of.
I don't think you can.
Physically, you mean, topographically?
Yeah, because to his point, it just, so, Mr. Buchanan, I spoke today, he called me today to explain this to me. We had a chance to visit about it so I could have a chance to look at it and really make sure I was on the same page with him. So the drive to the south, oh, I'm sorry, to the north, would be to the north.
Yes.
Was, came in after the fact, and I think, my suspicion, assuming this is accurate, is that that's where the oversight was made, that there wasn't an alignment, because he bought a tract with a central driveway, and the only way you could set that track up in order to try to maximize how you would develop it is to put that drive in the center and put the buildings on the sides. So if he moves that driveway over, he's going to lose a lot of opportunity, in my view, to make logistically this site plan work for development purposes? So I get his, I get his point there, but maybe more notably is that I think it's a little, I mean, to me, it bothers me that we had a drive over here, but now we're going to make the applicant move a drive that was existing when we approved the one across the street. The intersection's not in yet, so I don't know if we can do something to remedy that, if there's some sort of like, and this is way outside of my pay grade, but if there's some sort of offset or way we can, we could alter that intersection to accommodate that, but it seems pretty unfortunate and unfair to move a drive when we missed the alignment on the front end. We could have fixed that on the front end and we didn't, is my point.
Well, can we just, I mean, we've got a certain amount of right-of-way, right? Or was this new right-of-way for Southwest 138? Are you saying that they could have aligned the entire street to his drive?
Well, there's two PUDs right there, I mean, either side of, you know, right there, so something was.
It's a split median on this. It's a split median on, on the north side of the road, and so they, they could have moved that over to align with the existing curb cut. There was a curb there, is his point. It was, it was visible, it existed.
I don't think we generally locate streets to align with residential driveways.
Well, but why wouldn't we if we knew there was a curb cut there and we had a property that was zoned? Why wouldn't we have, if that's our policy, why wouldn't we have aligned that?
Well, here's my point on this. I get all that, I've got two thoughts. One, I feel like if, if we, if we believe that this property is not developable to this density because you moved the curb cut, to me, that's a failure of creativity. I think, I think you need to take another look at the site. I can't imagine that you can't get this much parking in this amount of office on that side.
I did a drawing, if it would help you out, but I wasn't going to pass it out unless you felt, felt that way.
Well, I just, I don't care what you would show me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to come to a belief that you can't do this with a curb cut in a different location. Now, I mean, I do this for a living, that's all I'm saying. So I understand you do too, I do too, and I just can't believe.
But when I bought the property, though, there was a Spud, I could show you the drawing on there.
Here's the second thing, I get it, and here's in response to that, you bought here today because that Spud wasn't adequate. You had to come for a change. This is the city's opportunity to correct mistakes. And so if you want to develop it where the curb cut is, I think you do it without your doctor's office, in my opinion. I mean, that's where I'm at on this item. I'm not speaking for the commission. That's where I'm at on that.
Did the city not put the sidewalk in there and build those driveways? That looks like city sidewalk and ADA and, I mean, we actually built his driveway there on the east side of Western.
I was told yesterday, when I met with them, I met with Richard McCabbin, that he was going to come to the pre-meeting today and they were going to remove that TE. So I'm surprised they're not here.
I'm not sure exactly what you heard, but this is not a traffic issue, it's a planning issue. So traffic doesn't have a concern. It's a planning issue.
Wait, what do you mean by that? I mean, we have traffic as part of these reports. To say that, I mean, if somebody with the city told him something, we could at least address it, to say, traffic is part of the overall, right?
Traffic management didn't include that specific comment under their section of the staff report. The TE did not come from the traffic management section. It came from the planning department section. So we're just trying to draw a distinction between it not being a problem for traffic management, but it being a problem for a broader planning context, so.
And the broader planning context on an offset drive on Southwestern Avenue is, is what?
Well, the separation requirement of 150 feet helps eliminate confusion at turns to allow traffic to stack. I mean, I, I think that if traffic management didn't have a policy that allows people to maintain an existing drive, they would prefer that this would be lined up for safety reasons. They're not going to ask the applicant to do that because they have the right to keep an existing drive in its location. So that's why they are technically not coming forward to recommend that. Where we are, we are more aligned with what Commissioner Highsmith's comments were, is this is an opportunity under a P.U.D. to provide some flexibility to make it a safer, cleaner, better intersection through maybe some modifications to the design. And I think it's up to the commission to decide how important those issues are.
Let me, if I can address, when the property, when this Spud was down, there was not 400 feet either way, there was not a driveway cut anywhere, nowhere. The Spud was down, the driveway was shown on the exhibit. They came in and put this drive in across the street. They had 800 feet to work with there to line this up. I looked at the staff report for the development across the street, they did not require them to line up with me. Now, I have a Spud. The reason I bought it, the driveway was in the right location. Paving was already down there, and that's my expectation is, is when, when I have a Spud, that that's where the driveway should be able to be. That's why I bought the property the way it was, because I did the feasibility on it. I'm going, okay, I think I can do this as long as I can get two buildings on the front to make it feasible.
Well, and to your point, with the existing Spud, if you were developing it under the existing Spud, you'd be right. You'd have the right to make use of that. But you're seeking a change in the zoning, and so that is our opportunity to bring the property into compliance with our planning designation.
I'd like to point out that earlier today on case number seven, where the apartments were going in off of Sooner Road, we allowed the exact same thing coming out of there that he's asking for. The driveways are offset from where Sooner Road, street, and the street going into the residential area across the street, and there's going to be traffic, and there's going to be a traffic signal there. If you look on the overhead view of Mr. Buchanan's application, the south edge of one driveway meets up with the north edge of the other, and so could the signal line. meets up with the north edge of the other. And so could the signal light not just be planned a little more extensively and spread a little further apart? I mean, it's, it's that way at 104th and Penn, turning into the Kingsgate neighborhood. You have, in fact, you have a whole lot more space there of multiple driveways coming out into a bigger area. Basically, these people are just slightly offset from each other.
Right.
Aubrey, would you speak to the difference between this item and the previous one?
I'm not sure what the separation of the drives is on the previous one, but the TE recommends either aligning them or offsetting them 150 feet, which I think is maybe the minimum distance for separation of streets.
That's what we said on the previous item?
No, that's what this item says, but I'm not sure what the, what the offset is of the previous item. I don't know if it did meet the 150 feet or not.
Mr. Buchanan, what uses are you changing from what the existing?
I'm basically wanting to add, doctors be able to go into it.
And that's the, and that's the only thing, right?
It's basically like that. It would be, you know, some professional type things sell products. So in that, you need more of a retail zoning than you do, quote, just a O2 office.
So you, this is what I'm going to, I'll come down on this. Use in density, focusing on that, if he built it today, you used your point, right? He builds it today, builds it, doctor wants to go in, he comes in and files a rezoning to allow a doctor's office to go in. Do you vote for it? Probably so. Why? Because it's the same use that's going in now. You have an existing property. I get, I get a little defensive of these property rights issues on things like existing curb cuts, because people do, whether you could design it differently or you could add a second story to get the same square footage, people make decisions about investing in property because they look at it, they assess it the way he's done, and they make a determination. And once that capital is down, they've done that under the pretense they can do this stuff. So if he came in here and built it and then came back and rezoned it, if you'd vote against that, then I understand why you'd be opposed to this. If you wouldn't, then I think that's where the conflict point is, because it's not changing anything about the use of the density.
And I don't see where, to me, property rights comes into somebody making a bad decision when they purchase a lot.
But that's...
Like, you can't, it's, to me, it's a due diligence issue. I'm sorry that...
That's what I did.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Well, I know, that, that...
That's not, that's not fair.
Doctor's office was not a part of this in the beginning.
That's not fair in this...
That's why he's back.
I know, but that's not fair in this instance, because it wasn't as though that, that 138th was cut in by the city at the time it was held.
I get that. I get that.
Or, or that he went out and poured a curb cut on an approach.
I don't even mean to sound this passionate about this, because frankly, it's not that big of a deal to me. But it's enough on this item that, to me, we've got to come to some kind of understanding, I guess, in my opinion, on the commission, that this is where we make changes. When they, when items come in, regardless of their history, to me, this is our chance to do the right thing. I wasn't here on the first spud, I'm sorry, the first spud. But to me, it's like, I look at it, and I'm looking at it fresh, as if it's the first day it came in. The history, to me, is not that important. And I see, look, we've got an opportunity to do the right thing. It's not that big of a deal, in my opinion, to move a curb cut. And I definitely don't think it's that big of a deal to relay out of sight. I think he can do what he needs to do on it. So to me, look, I understand, I'm not under the illusion that I'm going to see what I would like to happen here today. But I, that's just my opinion. Like, this is how I see it.
Does anybody else have anything they want to say? Is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard on this item?
Just one thing I would like to say is, I met with Debbie Miller yesterday. I showed her this, this situation. I wasn't going to bring this up. But when I met with traffic yesterday, they said they were going to be here and talk to this. So I'm disappointed at this point.
Well, for what it's worth, if the commitment was that they would indicate that they didn't have a problem with this, and the committee...
They're the ones that had the problem with it.
That's exactly what they did.
Yeah, they're the ones that had the problem with it. And they told me yesterday they had the problem with it.
That's not accurate. It's not a traffic thing. It's a planning thing. The TE was not generated by traffic. It was generated by planning.
Wait, but I'm sorry, you say it's not a traffic thing, it's a planning thing, but planning's issue is traffic?
Yes. I'm saying, I'm saying the department...
So it's a traffic thing. It may not be the traffic department, but it is a traffic thing not being expressed by the traffic.
What I meant was, it is, it is not generated by the traffic department.
Then Debbie Miller, when I met with her yesterday, she said, Steve, that driveway's been there since 2000, early 2000s. She says, I live in the area. I know that driveway. She says, they can't make you align with that driveway. That was not there. They had the opportunity to align the driveway across the street. They chose not to do that. She says, they can't put that on you because you have a spud, you have it in place, that driveway's been there for a long time. They chose not to do, in the staff report, across the street to line up with my driveway. So when I bought the property, I bought it based on the spud was in place, the driveway was in place, the approach is already poured, that I did my feasibility around that spud on what I could do. So I've already bought the property. I'm way past that. I've already actually done the engineering for the water on it. Water, the sewer, it's already been done. So I'm way past that. What I'm coming to you today for, what all I thought I was coming to you today for was to add a medical use.
And we've heard the issues on my item. I think it's time to see where everybody's staying. I would prefer, maybe if one of these guys made the motion, though. I don't want to vote on it twice.
I'm going to make the motion that we approve spud 112, removing the driveway issue from the TE. And the other TE is irrelevant, right?
I accept the other TE as far as the buffer on the east side. That's fine.
Okay. So leaving TE 1 in place and removing TE 2?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 20, removing TE number 2. Cast your votes, please. It passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item 21 is SPOD 1113 to rezone 301 Northwest 104th Street from SPOD 740 to SPOD 1113.
Bob Myers, Myers Investment, 301 Northwest 104th. We're just asking, I guess, to rezone this. It's already zoned. I'm asking to change some variances on 104th.
So in discussing this with staff,
Yes, ma'am.
they indicated that they're seeking an additional bit of setback here off of 104th Street.
104th Street, or 350 linear fifth.
And you understand that. I mean, your request is really that it be up to the street.
Up to the property line.
They need another five feet because of the water line or sewer line or whatever it is.
I talked to water engineering. They're willing to let me go closer to the property line if it's not a concrete structure or a footing or a slab floor. This is just a RV covered parking that is a pre-engineered building that has no concrete floor or footings. That's what he was supposed to let Mr. Liggins know and send an email for me.
And is that, is that what you had understood also, J.J.? Not a concrete floor or footing?
Yes, as long as it has no concrete foundation, if it's just like a pole barn, a metal building to cover outside storage.
The only reason I'm requesting this, I have storage facilities also here. I have the ability to park vehicles outside. I don't want to see the vehicles outside. I want to be able to, of course, park and hide them. Granted, there's more money involved if it's covered. But I don't want to look at someone's vehicle parked there in RV.
The one question I had for staff, item number nine, access, the statement is gravel drives shall be permitted. We always require concrete aprons on drives, don't we? I mean, the gravel's not going to come straight to the street, is it?
Well, yeah, the approach on the street would be, need to be concrete.
Well, there is no, I have no concrete. My streets are almost non-existing on Hudson. It's a gravel drive.
That's true.
And 104th is barely an asphalt road. It's a chip and sealed old road, potholes all over it. It's not worth...
I've been out there.
In that case, what we've done is, is require, is allow the gravel and then require the improvement of the approach if the street is subsequently improved.
And we believe, I'm working with Debbie Miller to repave 104th and Broadway Extension to Hudson. Now, we don't know when that will happen.
To be clear, the, the approach will be paved at the owner's expense, at the city's expense?
At the owner's expense.
Okay. So you understand that?
Well, not really, no. I don't know what grade. I can't spend money on my gravel or my parking lot, when I don't know if future construction on either side of me to the east west is going to bring a street.
No, I'm talking about if the street is improved. I'm not talking...
Oh, if it's improved, yes. I'd be agreeable to put, put concrete in my approaches if the street is improved and/or asphalt, whatever is required.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant? Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item today? I'll take a motion.
Just so we're clear, you are saying you do agree with the technical evaluation, that when the street's improved, then you'll add the...
Yes, if the street's improved, I will do my approaches. Yes.
Cool. Well, then I move approval of item 21, subject to the technical evaluation.
Second.
My motion is second to approve item number 21. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 22 is SPOD 1086 to rezone 222 East Sheridan Avenue, Suite 2, from the Bricktown Core District to SPOD 1086.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Also with me is Tim Johnson and Mark Zizao. This is an SPOD to allow a billboard, an EMD sign, on the west face of the Bricktown parking garage. I'm sure everybody's familiar with the Bricktown parking garage, but for reference, it's right here. It's just north of the ballpark. The sign location, you can see there on that, and better here, would be on that, that western face. The size that we're seeking is approximately 360 square feet. And this is, it's a, it's a unique application in that it's identical to one that Tim and I did several years ago for the Brewers. We came through and did the EMD signs that exist at the three parking lots that the Brewers have. If you've been in Bricktown, you've seen those blade EMD signs. In that case, it was similar to this. The Bricktown Committee recommended, or they recommended denial. And as we moved through the process, it was ultimately approved at the city council stage. The spud that is before you is almost identical in terms of the regulations, in terms of the, the way that we seek to limit the sign. When you think of Bricktown, I think, I think everybody would agree that Bricktown is Oklahoma City's entertainment district. As the entertainment district, the nature of that, you often have multiple different events at multiple different times. The only way to, I think, adequately express those events and promote those events is through an EMD sign. And so when you look at the language that we have in the SPOD, specifically Section 7.4, it says what we're seeking. "A single 12-foot by 30-foot EMD 2 sign shall be permitted in this spud, be located on the west face of the existing structure. The sign shall be permitted to advertise the parking structure on which it is located, as well as incorporate advertising for the businesses located within the parking structure. Copy shall also be permitted, which announces local and Bricktown events and event sponsors. Copy shall be required to change no faster than every eight seconds." So what that means is that level 2, it's not full animation. It's a, you know, a static sign for eight seconds, and then it rolls to another static sign for eight seconds. What we, you know, what we had pitched at the, for the Brewers was, you know, this is almost like an accessory sign in that it's, it's accessory to the district. It's accessory to Bricktown. It will allow for not only the uses within the garage, but also the uses that are going to be occurring within the district. One of the questions raised was, you know, visually, what are we dealing with as, as we approach Bricktown? And so Mr. Johnson's office was able to get three separate vantage points. And what you can tell is, when you're outside the district, you won't be able to see it. One, due to the crosswalk that exists between the hotel and the Cox Center, and then the, the bridge, the, with the railway that exists prior to entering Bricktown. And so these images show you that you won't be able, you won't be able to see it as you're approaching. And then here's another one that's taken from essentially the, the front of the Harkins Theater. You can see that, due to the ballpark and the structure associated with that, you won't be able to see it from there. So where you'll be able to see it is as you're, you know, in the district and driving down Sheridan. So again, this is, to me, this is very similar to, to the one that was approved. When you look at what would be allowed, that the regs for Bricktown would allow a 16-square-foot EMD sign for the parking garage. One of the problems you have here is, as you might imagine, 16 square feet on a large structure like this, elevated, simply isn't big enough. Yeah, you wouldn't be able to see it. It'd look like a postage stamp up there. So I do want to address a couple of the comments that you would have seen if you read the Bricktown staff report, specifically where it says, it's discussing this idea of 2016, there was an effort to revise the ordinances as it relates to signs in Bricktown. This was a reaction by a very select group of people on the Bricktown Committee to try to rid these signs from Bricktown. And it says, "At the time, the consensus was that EMD signs have a generally detrimental impact on the aesthetics." Well, I, I think the word consensus is just wholly inaccurate. There, there wasn't a consensus. There was a consensus of a handful of people on the Bricktown Committee. One of the problems, and this is no fault of staff, it's the way the process is set up, when they went through these ordinance changes, there was no outreach whatsoever to the stakeholders. Staff noticed it, like they're required to do so, but the, the committee members or others, instead of talking to stakeholders in the area, they rushed this process through in a manner in which the stakeholders had no, had no, I guess, ability or weren't aware of the process and didn't show up.
David, that is not true.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Johnson owns one of the largest buildings in Bricktown, and he was never notified of these changes. Mr., the Brewers, who also own a lion's share of property, were never notified, nor was Mr. Mazahary.
We always allow public notice of meetings for ordinance changes. And we always, when we're working in a design district, will speak to the association, the Bricktown Association. And I'm, I'm, I can look back at our records for that, but that is our standard process, is that we reach out to stakeholders and try to get feedback about that. So I, I'm willing to say, perhaps, that didn't happen. I really seriously doubt that and do not remember that we didn't have outreach.
Well, I mean, like I said, Mr. Johnson owns one of the largest buildings in Bricktown. He can come to the podium. And it's not staff's fault. Staff followed all the procedures that are required. The problem is, unless you are people like us that, that are involved in these city commissions or happen to just follow Channel 20 and watch what's happening, you wouldn't have been aware. And so, you know, the Mazaharries and the Brewers, who own a lion's share of property in Bricktown, weren't reached out to, didn't receive notice. They don't follow Channel 20, perhaps. It's, thus my only point.
Urban Development Committee would have heard it. And I know that Mr. Johnson is on the mailing list for those meetings as well. So at some point, there were meetings and discussion happening before the notice goes out for a zoning change to city council. So I, I will go back.
There wasn't a zoning change.
It was a change to an ordinance that would have gone through the standard process of planning commission, city council.
Right. But...
Change the ordinance.
And like I said, I'll let Tim speak for himself. But he, he never received, you know, actual notice of, of these changes that were going on. And so to say there was a consensus, I just don't think that's accurate. It wasn't a consensus with the property owners.
Well, it's fair to say that it was a consensus of the people who voted on it, right?
Sure.
Because it was, the report does reflect that it was a unanimous vote.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. But in the report, there's this, the tone of the report is that there was this engaged stakeholder process, and this was the consensus of what everybody wanted. I don't think that is an accurate portrayal of what happened.
Well, I wasn't here. I don't, Janice, you may have been when that was going on. I don't, I can't think of anyone else it was. So we can't, I can't speak to that.
Sure. I think Commissioner Powers is the only, Hensley, but he's not here.
And I will, but go on.
And so, I mean, that's it. I mean, this is, I think, in keeping with, with Bricktown. If Bricktown is the entertainment district, I think this is where you would expect to see signage like this. I mean, if you cross the railroad tracks, you've got multiple signs. You've got signs right on the other side of the tracks at the, I guess, Santa Fe Depot. The city itself has, I think, the largest EMD sign in the city on the, it's not the Ford Center, the Chesapeake Arena. The Opubco has a very large audible EMD sign. And so in the downtown districts, it's not uncommon. I think it's frankly expected that you would see signage of this nature.
What would keep, just for a second, the billboard we just talked about. One of the things, the reason that staff didn't have an objection to it is because it met the spacing requirements. That's an objective criteria to limit and regulate the number of signs, right, in any area, on highways in that instance. I think the comment that stands out to me in this report that's really impactful on me is the concern by the committee or the... or the commission that was, that was set to look out after these issues, is that this would be a precedent that could allow for proliferation of these boards, and that's not something that, that they wanted to have happen. Now, whether or not stakeholders should be consulted, to me, is a whole different issue. What about this wouldn't allow, what objective regulation could we hold on to when the next guy comes through the door next week and wants the same-sized sign on his building across the street?
Well, I mean, because we limit it. Because you have this unique structure with, you've got parking, you've got multiple end-users on the bottom, it's, it's a unique structure.
That becomes a tough standard to implement objectively here when, when Mr. Johnson could come through the door and say, "I want one, and I've got tenants in the building, and we're going to let them have cycle signage on it, but hey, there's a non-accessory sign down the way, and I want to be able to advertise it." And I'm not saying that he's wrong to do that. I think if I had a building there, I'd probably want to do the same thing, too.
Well, except that here, a sign is allowed. It would just be 16 square feet.
And I take a little bit of an issue with that, because the 16-square-feet thing, I think, was very, if you read the report, it seems clear to me that it was designed to show that there were open slots available. So it wasn't that they ever anticipated we were going to take this 16-square feet and slap it five or six stories up in the air. It was going to be at the entrance to a garage, which the entrance to a garage, that's a perfectly reasonable amount of signage to indicate, hey, there's spaces open, or hey, there's availability. So I, I think that's taking, I think this sign goes against what the intention was when they adopted that, that limitation. And I think, the other thing that stands out to me that I think you should address is that in March, on March 11, 2015, there was a 540-square-foot board at this same parking garage, right, that was proposed and was denied. So this has been tried once before. Is that correct?
Yes, it, but I, it was denied by the Bricktown, but it was, it was withdrawn, ultimately withdrawn.
Okay.
He was waiting for the, for Tim and I to get done with the Brewer case. Why he ultimately decided to, to pull out, once we got the Brewer case approved, I don't know. We weren't involved at that time.
I see.
But this is almost half the size of, of that.
Well, my, my last comment on this, and I think Commissioner Powers will appreciate this, and Commissioner Privet, I know you're now on the Board of Justice. I mean, one of the things that used to frustrate me on, in that seat, is when we would read committee or commission reports that were really, really subjective. I don't like this because not, this is the ordinance, this is what happened, this is what we followed, this objective that you can point to when you have to make a real decision. And I'm going to tell you, I, I have to commend this report, because when I read it, I read them now with a lens of trying to identify subjectivity. I don't see it in here. I think they did a really good job of articulating their process, their policy, what they did, why they did it. It doesn't make it right, and it doesn't mean that there shouldn't be a larger discussion about this in the area, but it does mean that they objectively went about their business. At least that's what's reflected in the report to me. Whether someone was notified or not, I don't know. But that, that, I'm impressed by the report. I commend him for, for that.
Well, I mean, I, I'm going to say something really subjective, real quick, because if, to me, if there's any district or any area of the city where this would make sense, I actually agree with David. I think it's Bricktown. It's our entertainment district. That said, on this, I don't really, in the end, I don't care. And so at least from my position, I'm not going to exercise that subjectivity. I'm going to leave it up to, to others. But that, but I have to say, like, I do think it's something that should be scrutinized further, because like, to me, I just don't, I don't know. I don't get it. I don't.
Yeah, and I'm, and again, I'm not saying that it's right. I, in fact, I'm not sure that it is, but at least as it stands today, those are the regulations, and it's not, I don't think it's, there's a reason that design committee is there, and it's not necessarily our place as the planning commission to come in and, and change that. And when we may be opening a box, because before you do that, there should be some objective criteria, like a thousand-foot separation, or whatever that is, before we start letting people put these big old signs on buildings.
Well, I, I would note that it's a recommendation, and our recommendations are thrown to the wayside all the time at councils. So I don't think, I don't think necessarily that it's not our, our commission right to make a difference.
I watched the B U D C meeting, and frankly, I, I agree with just about everything they said. They made some good points. And to me, it's not conducive to pedestrian traffic in this sign. I think the 16, you know, by whatever that our ordinance is, is conducive, and, you know, should be lower to the ground for pedestrians. I, I don't really support this sign, but.
Architecturally, it's an unattractive sign.
That's another deal, too. I, I figured it could be designed a little bit better for Bricktown. I mean, being right on the main road in Bricktown, they got quite a few design elements.
That's your objective opinion, of course.
Of course, yeah.
We're in an alternate universe here today, I have to say. And, yeah, you, you all know very well that I am no lover of signage. I have to say one thing, though, about this. There's, there's a comment that just jumped out at me when I read it, that has to do with the staff report from the Design Review Committee, the Bricktown Urban Design Review Committee. And someday, we'll have to have a much, much bigger discussion about the concept of design review committees exercising, you know, sort of objective criteria in their decision-making. But there's a statement here that essentially, the intent behind the new E M D sign regulations was a concerted effort to prevent Bricktown from evolving into Times Square or Las Vegas. And the reason that statement jumps out at me is because way back when, when we started talking about E M D signage, and the Mathis Brothers sign was sort of the birth of all of that, there was a lot of talk about, you know, whether we should have any of them anywhere in the city. They were just a bad idea, period, and it was just, we should just not allow them. One of the comments that, that, I mean, was made frequently, and the discussion that occurred virtually every time one of them came up for every little sonic sign that we would hear, had to do with the fact that it's not like it's Bricktown, where, you know, it's an entertainment district, and it's like Times Square or Las Vegas. It's like, that's the place for those kind of signs. That's where they ought to be. That's what that whole thing is about. And so for me, I have a bit of a problem with the fact that when these changes, the sign code, were presented to us, and I do remember that very clearly. And in fact, when I was talking to Lisa Cronister about this in advance of this meeting, she gave me the same explanation that we were given then, that these changes that were being made to the sign code were, they weren't really even changes. They, we weren't doing anything different. We were just tightening up the language. It wasn't intended to make any big change. There certainly was not ever that I was aware of or participated in, and I go to a lot of meetings, any discussion about the fact that, oh, you know, Bricktown is not intended to be Times Square, and we don't want it to turn into Las Vegas, and we have this whole other vision for what that's going to be. And in connection with signage specifically, never had that conversation. So the idea that we have taken this sudden, it seems to me, pretty dramatic 90s-degree turn here, to the right or left, depending on how you look at it, is problematic. I mean, I, I am not going to say that I'm in love with this sign. I'm not even going to say I think we ought to approve this sign. But the idea that we're sort of changing direction here in a fundamental way, and in a way that was actually kind of presented like, we're not making any change here. It's not any different than what we've always done, and what we've always said, for me, is really problematic. The only real issue that I have with respect to this particular sign, and again, no big lover of signs, is this idea about it being sort of accessory or non-accessory and so on. I will say, I do believe, if ever there was a place that an E M D sign belonged, it's in Bricktown. So there is that. But it seems to me that if we have signage that is advertising a building, its occupants, and the products that they sell, or services they provide, that's really not that different than an accessory sign. It's not the same thing as selling advertising space to whoever comes and pays you a dollar and puts what, whatever they want. The idea that they did with the Brewer, and of course, the Brewers have been involved in Bricktown from the beginning of time, so the fact that they are civic-minded enough to want to advertise events that occur in Bricktown, and that they were willing to limit their signage advertising to that is, I guess, fine. It was all done through an S P U D, and they're perfectly well able and welcome to do that. But, but the idea that the controls that are going to be put in place limit that somehow seems bizarre to me. I mean, I don't think we have the ability to, to regulate content in that way. I don't think it makes any sense for us to try to police it, or enforce it, or any of those things. If, if the advertising for this signage is going to be for the building, for its occupants, for the products and services they provide, I don't have a problem with that. And then we can talk about the size of it for another half hour or so, if you guys want to. But, you know, the sign itself, and the fact that it's E M D, I do remember the discussion about the parking lot thing and the signs, and I have a very clear recollection of, you know, the, the example being given, you know, the little surface parking lots, where there are little signs, and they want them to be E M D because they want to be able to say it's full, or it's not, or here's the amount, or it's not. And so they needed that capability, rather than to be out there changing out the lettering. And so the fact that they were tiny made sense. I don't think that they were intended, at least amongst those of us who are voting, I won't speak for those of us who are, those of them who are presenting it to us, to, to control this kind of signage. I mean, the parking lot signage limitations, I really think had to do very specifically with a much smaller area than a building like this. So, for what it's worth.
I will.
And, and I will say, although he's not here to speak for himself, that's what he gets, I, I checked with Commissioner Hensley about this, about whether he had a different recollection of how this was presented, and how we discussed it, and how we reviewed it when we were voting on these changes, and whether he had any sense that we were making some kind of decision that Bricktown was going to be something different than we had all pictured it to be. And he remembers it the way I do. So I, I don't think I'm off-base about that.
I was a part of the Brewer sign deal. We actually built the signs. They were four-by-eights that on top of the little parking garages, and they've done a very good job of keeping the advertising on them specific to what they were allowed to do when that variance or plan was granted. I've got a couple of questions about this. Does this sign have the capability to dim itself down at night, as well as during the day when it's overcast?
Yes.
Is there any residential in the line of sight facing west from there?
No.
In any way, shape, or form?
No.
That was a question of mine as well.
I've got to say that it's Bricktown, and this works in Bricktown, and anyway, I'm kind of with Mary. I don't necessarily like the box on the side of the building. It would be nice if it had some better aesthetics. Kind of, well, I mean, go look at what the Brewers did to their signs.
Yeah, and I don't think our client, I mean, that.
Yeah.
They could frame it out, or, or something.
Yeah, they dress it up a little bit, but I think this is very appropriate for the area, as long as it's not one shining into any residential, and it's of a quality LED sign that is going to function and work well into the future.
To follow up on the residential question, I mean, does that include hotels?
Yeah, but so there are none.
Yeah.
I'm trying to picture what is directly across the street from there, and it's the old Nonas and.
That's right.
And there's a Brewer parking lot that has a digital sign, and then Tap Works, and so I don't really see any residential, any further west of there.
No, you've got the old Purple Bar, Nonas, and then it's the, that, connected office buildings that you walk into from here, and then it's another parking lot, another parking lot. Then on north side, you've got the Brewer and Tap Works, another parking lot, some club, I believe, and then the old spaghetti warehouse building.
I went and drove this to satisfy myself about that. And, I mean, of course, they all glow, but in terms of direct line of sight, it's not visible from any residential, including hotel.
As long as the nit levels at night aren't blinding to that eastbound traffic on Sheridan, I don't see any.
They'll comply with the nit level requirements in the code.
Is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard on this item today? Is there even anybody else present? Do you have any other additional comments, questions, concerns? Are we ready to make a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion. If there's no other comments, I move approval of item 22.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item number 22. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
The remaining items have been continued. That was our last case.
Commissioners, anybody have anything they want to?
I do, actually, today. I'm going to try to make it super fast. I know we all want to go.
No, no, no. We have all the time in the world.
Can I, can I ask one question, Aubrey, of you? Given the city's choice, say we've got a street with, you know, a sidewalk running next to it, where do we prefer street trees?
Well, in general, we like to buffer the sidewalk from the street with a tree lawn. That would be kind of the typical suburban setting and urban setting, so that door swings are not swinging out on the sidewalk where pedestrians would be, but would have a little bit of a buffer space.
Sure.
So that would be kind of the ideal, but of course, there's lots of different ways to put street trees offset or double rows, so it kind of depends on the context. But in general.
Well, I.
Between the sidewalk and street.
I've just noticed over time that, you know, through professionally, that a lot of time, when I try to follow what I believe is the ideal location for street trees, that that is also typically where we run water.
Right.
And water, of course, has, you know, rules that prevent us from putting our street trees there.
Right, yeah.
It would be great if we could come to an agreement between our utilities and our planning department.
We have. We have some guidelines about separation of water lines to street trees, and the types of street trees that would be better to be located within a certain distance of that water line. We have a document called Trees.
I'm aware of it, but, but typically, you know, because that is where utilities runs, my understanding is it's an unofficial policy to run the water next to the street, behind the curb, and before the sidewalk.
Right.
Which.
It is not necessarily a requirement that we have to put it in that location. And planning department, utilities department have been working together for many years to try to look at different solutions, like running the water lines in a different location underneath the street, not in that easement, to prevent street trees from being planted in that location. And we're still working towards those goals, and we know that we have that conflict, and there are always ways to seek permission to do it, and approval to do it. If you do things in tree wells, or you put containment barriers around the root zone, there are a lot of different provisions working with utilities to get that done.
Cool. I just hate to, to think that the future of Oklahoma City's street trees is all crepe myrtles.
Right.
I think we could do.
Yes, we're hoping.
Okay, cool. That's it.
Although, I have to say, I was in Houston, not one of my favorite cities recently, and they have, because of the climate there, of course, they have these mountains of crepe myrtle in the, in the Boulevard medians. They're, they're like as tall as this room. They're just gorgeous, and they're always blooming. So if we could accomplish that, it might be okay. Anybody else?
If I, if I could mention something briefly that we considered a while ago, the city council recently denied an application that we approved to rezone an area in Wood 7 to allow for law firms slash medical marijuana dispensary. We, JJ and I, and a number of staff members, attended a very fun and heated community meeting about our, what was our meeting about our, what was our commission's unanimous approval of that. And so, it turns out that the notice that the neighborhood received, and correct me, JJ, said that it was going to be changed to like, to office, or it was going to, I forget exactly the exact wording, but the bottom line was, it didn't actually say that the permitted use was going to be a medical marijuana dispensary, which led to there being no opposition until the neighborhood eventually ends up reading everything and saying, oh, I didn't know that that was the case. I don't know that, obviously, it was not the intent of staff to be deliberately deceptive. The perception by the neighborhood was that we, as a commissioner, that the staff were being deceptive. That's not our intent. I just hope that if there is a way for us to be more informative and keeping that in mind when we're dealing with heated, with controversial issues like this, that we might give additional notice or just be aware of that. I don't know how we address it. I just would like to see that happen so that citizens, we are, citizens aren't surprised like they were this last time.
You know, that's a difficult topic, and the whole thing, of course, with the medical marijuana dispensaries is a fairly new phenomenon, and I think we are still kind of feeling our way about that. You know, there are some issues with respect to the location of those that is a little different than, say, a dress store, but in terms of our use units, there's not a distinction. And I think that we have to be a little bit careful about, on the one hand, sort of inflammatory, you know, sort of stirring up opposition to what is a perfectly legal use. But I also understand what you're talking about, you know? There are some issues with respect to, and I listened to a lot of the actual City Council hearing on that. You know, there's some validity, I think, to issues particularly surrounding security. You know, this uses, as I understand it, tend to keep a lot of cash on site. And, you know, I can understand that if you were living next door to one, that might be an issue for you, you know, just that they're inviting. In the same way, perhaps, that a jewelry store would be. I mean, you know, it's just, you, I don't think we have any mechanism in place. I don't know what the mechanisms are in place at state level to assure that they have adequate security. I guess the business owners are themselves, you know, motivated to do that, I would think. But, you know, I think we are kind of feeling our way, and it might be a good idea for us to schedule some time, I don't know, for a study session or an urban development committee meeting or something where it's a little easier for us to talk and debate and exchange ideas than it is around the horseshoe here.
I'd say perfectly legal might be a bit of a stretch. According to the State of Oklahoma, not necessarily the federal government, so if the particular topic...
Right, and there are those issues.
Something that's illegal federally might be different.
Yeah.
I think the State of Oklahoma, as I understand it, the law as it's written, though, prohibits them being singled out in terms of the way they're dealt with as far as zoning code issues and so forth. They are not, they are not legally distinguishable in the State of Oklahoma from, say, a dress shop, right? Which is very strange, but it's just, you know, the way it is, so, or pharmacy.
I've got one thing. Sorry. Last meeting, made a comment about concern over a case we had referenced. I hope everybody had a chance to look at that again. I want to echo that after our discussion today on the specific plan thing. So, Dan, Aubrey, JJ, I don't know who, if any, or all three camps are here, but these staff reports we get on these specific plans don't have a staff recommendation as to whether or not they're in line in accordance with the P U D. And I have gone out and looked at this law now to be comfortable telling you that as an attorney, I feel comfortable saying I understand it, and I don't think that we do appear, because I, look at the ordinance. If I'm wrong, Dan, please correct me, but if I'm reading and interpreting the law correctly, when those specific plans come before us, our only, our only available option is to deny it if it is outside the confines of the P U D explicitly, or we could be setting the city up for a legal problem. And the reason that concerns me on the zoning side or on our side is because we are approving things believing that we're going to have another opportunity to see them and negotiate on them, and I don't know that that's legally accurate. And so, what concerns me is if there are things within a P U D document that applicants are bringing in, don't look at that piece of paper, look at the P U D, the master design statement, and understand what restrictions it actually creates within our ordinances and what it can do, because we aren't, and the only way that we're going to ever find this out for sure is when there's a lawsuit, right? But I don't think that it should get to that. I think we should have a better process for these. And that was my concern on the case we had a couple of weeks ago, which made me go out and do a bunch of research, and then we had some today, and I researched it again and got the ordinance on point, and looked at some case law, and I'm just telling you, I'm very concerned. So, please take a few minutes and look at that, and if staff could give us some guidance. These specific plans are starting to make me really nervous, so.
The specific plans do.
I would love to maybe get our group together and talk about this and have Municipal Counselors' Office available. Those of us who were here when we amended the ordinance to include this provision for a specific plan, remember why this was done. And it was to allow the Planning Commission to review in greater detail certain things that are listed in the ordinance. And those things allow for some discretion about lot layouts and circulation, basically some design elements of implementing the P U D as the P U D is written and as the master design statement is written. Master design statements can also express kind of a character or a vision for a P U D. that has to be interpreted through design. So, this specific plan is the time when the Planning Commission can make some of those subjective evaluations of whether or not the specific plan meets the intent of the P U D.
Understood, but again, think about what we do when we approve a P U D, that it could be a couple of years, right, before, before a specific plan comes before us, and that could be a whole different group of people. Go back and look at some of the P U Ds we approved today, not to exceed 85,000 feet or whatever, or not to exceed 30,000 feet in office in two buildings. So, we had this vision presented to us, right, of this, this community office environment with multiple buildings around the lake. Nonsense! They can come back in with a 15,000-foot office building and plop it down in front of us, and I don't think that we would have the legal ability to deny it because it is in line with the P U D. That's what we need to be mindful of when we review these applications, instead of thinking, because I, I'm guilty of this. I thought, well, no big deal, I'll just approve the P U D. because they got to come back with a specific plan. And then when we had that case a few weeks ago, and I went out and looked, I thought, oh, no. What did we do here? And I, I just don't want us to have that reflection two, three, four, 10 years from now on a lot of these cases. So, I think a study session would be super helpful.
I think it would be very helpful as well, and I think, I think your point is well-taken, that we need to be very careful about what it is we are approving and what it is that's actually being committed to.
Yeah.
I think, though, not to put too fine a point on it, you know, there are also people who appear in front of us regularly that have some investment in their reputations and in not overpromising what it is that they're going to deliver. And I don't have a problem holding them to that. I do think that the plan, that the staff reports tell us whether or not the specific plan that we're reviewing comports with the requirements of the P U D. It's not a recommendation.
We used to use, I think we used to have a lot more comments in the staff reports about specific plans, but that's practice that we could certainly pick back up.
I don't think that the staff ought to be making a recommendation. I don't think that's appropriate.
But what they're telling us is whether or not they believe it conforms with the P U D.
Yes.
And it's their job to review it, right, from an enforcement standpoint, they're going to be reviewing, and that's, that's why I think...
Absolutely, and that it ought, and whether or not it comports with subdivision regulations. I mean, all of those things, yes, absolutely.
Do you recall what your specific concern was? I think it was on number 19, you'd asked us to go back and take a look at a decision we had made two or four weeks ago.
February 14th?
Yes.
I don't remember what case number it was. It was involving the rezoning application for the Innovation District Medical Corridor Pocket there that was redesigned, yeah.
South of Fort...
Is it a legal concern?
It's a question of whether or not we understood what we, in my view, what we've approved there, or what we recommended for approval, which, again, was, in my view, we turn design authority outside the city's confines to a private group of people to make that decision, who are going to bring us a specific plan that we can only deny if it's not in line with the D T D two?
I don't agree with them.
I understand that you don't agree with it, which is why I've asked, I've asked for an opinion from staff on this. I'd still like one, because that's what I view that we did, and I want to understand if we didn't do that, why.
We, I mean, I...
I did have a conversation with you about that.
We were very specific...
I understand we had an initial conversation about it.
I mean, part of that discussion, for me, was very much about that specific topic. You know, I would not have voted in favor of that if I believed as you do.
And what I want to understand is why, if, why I'm wrong there, so that I can interpret that correctly. So, I want to understand what that process is. When they come back with an application, I want to know what that process looks like. And I would hope that everyone would before we approve something like that again, which is undeniably different than anything else I've ever seen us approve as it relates to a case here, which is why there was so much discomfort, at least for me, so.
It was out of the norm, but it wasn't the only thing that we've done in that way.
The only one he has seen, but, yes.
This issue is a great study session topic. We'd be happy to set that on an agenda coming up. We'll send out a poll for your availability and try to get that done soon. We do want to probably tie this together to another issue that we've been wanting to discuss, is about the level of detail and your expectation when you actually do approve a P U D., because that level of detail matters. And when the Development Services Department gets an application and they're reviewing what is being proposed at the building permit stage to the P U D., there's flexibility in there about where buildings and drives and things are located, if it's not specifically mentioned in the P U D. in words. If the master development plan that's attached to the P U D. is not specifically referenced in the words of the P U D. document, it cannot be legally held. So, these are the types of things the Planning Commission needs to understand and pay attention to when you're negotiating with an applicant about the level of detail you expect to come back at the permit stage and the specific plan stage. So, we will definitely schedule that up.
I would appreciate it, yeah.
I think that's a very good idea. Anybody else? No? No? Okay, where am I? I'm sorry. Planning Department?
Yes, I just wanted to bring people up to speed with where we are with our code update process. Our selection committee met. There were five applications. The selection committee is recommending moving forward with a group that will be going to City Council at the next City Council meeting to authorize negotiation of the contract. If there are any questions from any one of you or any member of the public about the scope of the project, how the community will be involved, how our stakeholders will be involved, please reach out to me or any member of my staff about that. We'd be happy to sit down and review that with you. The way that we see it is that this is the community's project, that our stakeholders are our developers and our engineers and our architects, the people who come before us, our neighborhood leaders, our community. We are the clients, and we are hiring a consultant to help us develop a code that works for our community and our city. And we have selected a consultant, we're recommending moving forward with a consultant, who has a lot of experience doing this in cities across the United States and other areas, cities of different sizes and scales and complexities, and this is their forte. So, I think we have a very good group. It was a unanimous recommendation of the selection committee through the first stage, which is the written proposal to an interview process, which was the second step. So, we're excited about it, and I just want to invite anybody to reach out to us if they have any questions, comments, or concerns about where we are with the process and how we're moving forward.
I forwarded you an email, and then I didn't make a note of the date of the Innovation District thing. Is that beyond our next meeting? So, it's, so we'll meet again before then, and I'll bring that with me. Development Services Department, Municipal Counselors' Office, I'm just dying to get out of here and bless your heart. Citizens to be heard, there are none, other business, nah. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.